A special treat for you this evening and to introduce that, I'd like to introduce you to our Chief of Police, Tim Collins.
Good evening, Mayor. In the past several months, there was a contest sponsored by Comerica Bank and the Detroit Tigers. I don't know if you've ever heard of them, but they're a professional baseball team. This is the second year for the Home of the Brave contest in which the several contestants from law enforcement, the military, and the fire services, the EMS, compete to see who can sing the National Anthem the best. Last year and this year Detective Brendan Moore was our representative to that contest. He was in a neck and neck race over the past few weeks. As it closed in, there was about five contestants and he and a young lady that was in the military were battling this out up until midnight Saturday. I'm happy to say that Detective Moore won this competition by about 3:00. The winning police department or the winning agency, which is our police department at this time, won a $10,000 grant and before anybody asks, we have no clue what we're going to do with it. What we are going to do though is that we're going to form a committee to come up with several ideas that will be advanced the police department's image in the community or something for the community or something for the police department. Once we come up with a group of ideas, we're going to have Detective Moore will be the final selector because he did all the legwork on this, so we're going to allow him to be the individual that makes that final pick. We're very proud of Brendan. He did an excellent job. You'll see that he has a great singing voice. We have fostered him out to several different places now. We've talked to the school for homecoming. He may be singing the National Anthem at the homecoming event that they're going to propose here this evening. There's a representative from the school board that will tell you a little bit more about that. But without further ado, I would like to introduce Detective Brendan Moore. Gentlemen, or everybody if you please stand. Gentlemen, remove your caps if you're singing the National Anthem for him.
Can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I failed to mention that Brendan's lovely wife Lori is sitting over here in the audience. Also Brendan will be singing that at Saturday's baseball game. We hope to have a lot of representatives. We're going to see what type of ticketing we can get. We have 35 tickets. We're part of the package, but I'm sure that's going to go to friends and family, Detective Moore, probably myself by virtual office.
The more.
By virtual office. She's got a louder microphone than I. But we're going to see if there's a possibility that we can purchase a block of tickets and then we'll see if there's anybody that's interested in that. But again, we're very proud of Detective Moore and it was a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Marnie, would you call her all, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Holter.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. In fact, we have a full hall this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana, just ahead of Councilmember Pollocka, I might add. Any discussion on the agenda?
No.
Marnie, would you call her all?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Holter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on to presentations, we have a number of presentations this evening, the first being the August Beautification Awards. And I see several members of our Ferndale Beautification Commission here with us this evening, so come on up and show us who won in August. There we go with the beautiful new logo of the Beautification Commission up on the screen.
All right. We can't decide, but we're going to do the announcements first. So this coming Saturday from 10 to 1 is our perennial exchange at Blooms on East Nine Mile. And we're also going to have at the exchange, a few tables. We're going to have pictures being sold, photography by Alana Saint Laurent. Then we're going to have artwork by one of our members. We're going to have pottery with sedum. So we're going to have quite a few items. Oh, rain barrels and compost, they're going to be there if anyone wants to purchase. And then we're going to even have a table with lamps that handcrafted from a Michigan artist. So it's going to be pretty fun, besides the perennials and raffle prizes. We have lots of raffle prizes. So that's this Saturday. And then we also want to remind people to look for Block Award winner. So every September, October, we give a Block Award to the most improved or, you know, and you'll see signs at the end of the corner, so in case they've already won, there'll be a sign. And one other thing is it's coming up to Halloween and we are giving out a Beautification Award.
Beautification.
Anyway, we started that last year, so hopefully we'll get some neighbors to recommend their neighbors. So all that being said.
And if they wanted to do that, how do they get ahold of you?
Oh, to nominate, they could message us on Facebook, Ferndale Beautification. They could send an email to ferndale.beautification@gmail.com or grab one of us.
Okay.
On the DPW too. They can contact the DPW.
Great.
So that's it. And Anna's going to talk about our August winners.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. All of these residents have been nominated by their neighbors, so that's a really positive thing to see. The first one is 966 West Oak Ridge, which happens to be the farthest end, I believe, of our city. It's right on a dead end and it's just a beautiful lot, especially in the backyard, which is very deep and very park-like. They have a pond back there. A lot of the landscaping has been done by the grandchildren of this couple who live there. Their names are Dave and Lori McPhee. Probably some of you know them. They've been in this area for a long, long time. They have a lot of garden art. I believe that Lori was also a member of the Ferndale Garden Club and of the Michigan Hostas Society. So you even see a number of miniature hostas back there, which seems to be kind of the newest thing that's happening with hostas, either the biggest thing in the world or the smallest. Very, very intricate. The more you look at it, the more you see. It's just beautiful. The next one is 1916 Highland and that is owned by Jeff Primo. It has a really colorful easement looking toward the house and the closer you get to the house, walk up that front walk, the more you see, the more intricate the garden becomes. Up by the front door, you find all kinds of sedum and different types of succulents that you wouldn't think that would survive during winters, but they do. And the next one is, we have a person in the audience.
Who else is there?
This is Jeannie Davis.
That looks familiar.
Do you want to come? This is 1531 Pinecrest. Usually you see her car right out there in front, but not this time. Jeannie, as you know, is president of the seniors and she's on a number of commissions. And also, she's an accomplished gardener. The front yard is very sweeping, the backyard is really gorgeous, very meandering and welcoming. Did you want to add anything more to that? What's your favorite perennial? Do you have one?
Hostas.
Yeah? Do you have miniatures too now?
I have miniatures and I have supposedly the biggest hosta called Princess Woo.
Is it that large now already?
It's about like this.
It's going to get as big as you are. It's going to get this tall.
Truly?
Truly. You'll have to take your photo in a couple of years next to it and.
Just to show the scale, we'll stand Councilman Pollocka up next to it.
That sounds. Yeah, we could do that. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Oh, and this is an additional picture of her backyard. It's very, very winding and welcoming, park-like. And the last one is 926 Alberta, owned by Ivan and Anna Midlam. Ivan has lived there for 10 years. They have totally redecorated the inside and the outside and you see a lot of hostas there too. The side view is intricate also. They have plantings all the way around the house. Very, very welcoming.
She singing again?
Okay. And the final winner is a commercial winner, which is local. Local doesn't have a lot of green space, as you can see, but what they do have is window boxes with purple flowers that have been blooming beautifully and lushly all summer long. I think that's about it.
Beautiful. Great.
Good to be here.
Thank you for presenting and congratulations to all the winners.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is the Ferndale Public Schools and I believe we have a trustee from the public schools here this evening with a sign that you may have seen around town.
Good evening. I'm Amy Butters. I'm here from the Ferndale School Board and I do indeed have a few visual aids tonight. Our Eagle Pride signs, these are all over town and I brought a few tonight for anyone who would like to take one. Anybody in the audience, please take one. There's a few in the back and anyone on the council. I know Councilman Pollocka already grabbed one and a few of you already have them on your lawn, so if you don't, please pick one up. And even if you don't live in Ferndale, we'd love to spread the pride all over, all over the county. We want to thank Jim Schaefer for sponsoring these signs. He made the donation to pay for these signs and we've got, I think we've got about 900 out, so they're all over. And I don't know, I would like to make a suggestion. I think they would really look nice on all the Beautification Award winners' lawns. In fact, I know that one of them is already on Jeannie's lawn and it looks really nice. So I wanted to make sure, I told you about that last time I was here and I wanted to follow up with that.
But if they can't get it this evening, if they're not here and they're watching at home, where could they get a sign?
So you can, several of our school buildings have lots of signs just on the school grounds. Please help yourself to just one of those if you would like. If you don't feel comfortable doing that and if you'd rather have somebody bring one to you, just give us a call. I can give you that number, 248-586-8651. And I know there were some questions about how long the signs should stay up and this is a campaign that's culminating with homecoming. So October 3rd is our homecoming football game and festivities and so we're planning on having the signs be out until then. You're welcome to keep your sign if you'd like or if you want to just leave it out, somebody can come collect it or you can recycle it, however you want to handle it. I know I'm going to keep mine, so it'll be nice to have for the memento version of it. A few other things going on, as I mentioned, homecoming, and I have that poster here. Homecoming is October 3rd. The football game is that night, but it starts with the parade, which is back on Nine Mile this year. The marching band and the kids from the high school will be having entries in the parade. I know I've heard talk of some floats, so there'll be, you know, some interesting things to watch during the parade. And then it ends, it starts at Woodward and Nine and then it ends at the school. And then when we get to the school, there's going to be all kinds of festivities for the whole family, bounce houses and live music and food trucks, climbing wall, it says here on the poster. So I've got a few posters here too, if anyone would like to grab a poster. We're very excited about this event this year. We've got lots, as you can see down at the bottom of the poster, we've got lots of businesses from the community that are sponsoring, helping us with the expenses of the event. And so it's, and you've probably seen the banners also along Nine Mile, again sponsored by businesses. And so we've really been so appreciative of the support we've gotten from the community. So that's coming up, October 3rd.
What time is the parade?
The parade, I think, let's see, does it have it on here? The whole thing is from 5:00 to 8:30. So I think the parade is starting at 5:00.
At 5:00.
Yes. And then the game, I think, is probably at 7:00. Chief Collins? Okay, and who do we play?
Pontiac.
Pontiac. So come on out and cheer on our Eagles. And then the marching band will be performing that night too. And we'll see about Detective Moore. I do want to put in a good word also. I want to offer congratulations to Detective Moore. He is a Ferndale High School graduate, 1980 is what I was told, and his wife too, both Ferndale High School graduates. So we're super excited about that victory that he had to sing the National Anthem down in Detroit this weekend and then, I don't know, we'll see if maybe he can come sing at our football game. That would be great. Okay, just a little bit more business I wanted to share with the council tonight. Of course, just going to find my flyer here on my phone. We on the school board are of course, big proponents of public education. And so I want to offer up an opportunity for people to support public education, which is taking place next Monday, a week from tonight. This is Oakland County Grassroots Task Force. And it's happening, it's having a meeting next Monday night at Oakland Schools from 6:00 to 7:00. And that's up in Waterford, Michigan. I know there are a few people in the audience that have already expressed some interest in going and we've got a couple of board members that are going to be going. This is a meeting where you can learn about how we can work together to support our public schools, our public education here in the state of Michigan, in Oakland County and the state of Michigan. So I wanted to offer that up as an opportunity for people to get involved if you were so interested. And then I just have a few points of pride to share with you about our kids. Find that one here. Cross-country at Ferndale High School, the men's and the women's team both competed in the first OAA Jamboree League meet last week. The boys finished on top by obtaining first-place honors and they came ahead of Berkeley, Birmingham Groves, Farmington Hills Harrison, Rochester Hills Avondale, and the rest of the division teams. They were led by Zach New, Senior, Nick Shernconnect, Junior, and sophomores Nick Major and William McElgin and Julian Jones. And the girls also participated. They placed fifth overall in the league and they were led by sophomore Isabel Kalanowski's top 10 individual finishes. So I wanted to pass that along, some great things happening with our cross-country team. Academically, we're really proud to announce about our high school senior Nora Armijo-Sinnett. She was named a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship, which is like, as I said, a national award. It's about 1.4 million students from more than 22,000 high schools enter this competition and she's one of 16,000 semifinalists from across the country. The contestants must submit a detailed application that includes their academic record, participation in school and community activities, demonstrated leadership abilities, employment, and honors and awards received. Semifinalists must have an outstanding academic record through high school and be endorsed by a high school official and they must write an essay. And the winners will be announced in April of 2015, so we have a little bit of a wait to find out how Nora did. And as a side note, you can hear Nora, there's an interview of Nora that our superintendent, Blake Pruitt, did as part of, he's doing weekly podcasts. And so he does an interview with Nora on that weekly podcast from last week. And so you can go on the Ferndale Facebook page if you'd like and do a search for that podcast and it's really nice. It's fun to hear her talking about her experience at Ferndale High School. And lastly, I have this little point of pride that we've got to share with you. You know, Ferndale has an adult education program and last week we had a gentleman by the name of William Vaughn who enrolled and he's 93 years old.
Wow.
And so we're really excited. We can say, you know, preschool age to age 93 now, which is pretty cool to be able to say we're all-inclusive here at Ferndale Schools. So that's all I have for you tonight in terms of news and points of pride. Any questions?
Any questions of Amy? Thanks for coming by as always.
We're thrilled to seeing you all at homecoming.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next presentation, Downtown Development Authority and I see Chris Hughes is in our audience this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, everyone at home. Communications and Marketing Manager, and I will try to get through it quickly. We have a lot going on. We are really excited about the homecoming parade and Eagle Pride taking place in downtown Ferndale. We love the banners. We're happy to be partners with them on many things, including being the sponsor of the marching band. Woo-hoo. So anyway, yay for Eagle Pride. Best thing about saying goodbye to summer is looking forward to the fall. I know we don't like to say goodbye to summer. Before we get looking forward to the fall, though, I'm going to reflect for a moment. We want to shout out to Ferndale Collision for helping the DDA present Get Real Outdoor Movies on Vester Street, which was a great, we had great fun at, the last event was this last Thursday with 16 candles. It was chilly out, but we had a great crowd. We had a couple that brought out a table and a candle and their chairs and they had a wonderful evening, sitting on Vester, watching a movie. It was a hoot. We had a really good time. We wanted to especially thank the Ferndale Police Auxiliary for helping us manage our huge crowd. It wasn't that big, but they were great to have on and we really enjoyed working with them on that. But especially to Ferndale Collision, we want to remind the public, we will be back next year. I know it'll be hard to think about, but July, August, and September. And if so, if you have any ideas for movies that you might like to see, post them on our Facebook page and we'll consider everything, though we only get to choose three. So it's been a great event. We also wanted to thank all the promoters of Funky Ferndale Art Fair and the DIY for bringing such great crowds to town for that weekend with both events. Downtown Ferndale was buzzing. That meant extra and often brand-new visitors to our downtown who got to enjoy our restaurants, visit our retailers, and just generally speaking, find out about the great vibe that we have in downtown Ferndale and then going back to their communities and spreading the word. So now as we look ahead, we're going to look right just two days. We have Wednesday, September 24th, the DDA's Biz Dev Committee presents its monthly B2B Networking and Information Session. We're going to meet, it's called FerNet, and we are going to meet at the New Cool Ambrew on Vester. And the subject will be workplace safety, which is very necessary and we are happy to provide this kind of information to our retailers. We're going to have Darren Rollins, he's a security expert from Pinkerton and he'll be telling our businesses how to be safe and secure for not only themselves, but their employees and their customers throughout the coming holiday season. So it should be a good day. We meet at 9:00. We're done by 10:00. Coffee and munchies are included, so bada-boom, bada-bang, and we get lots of good information out. We are also going to be talking about that meeting. Hard to believe we can get all this in, but I can talk fast. The details of a new text messaging program that we're going to start, and I think I might have mentioned it earlier, but it's called Fern Deals. And the DDA is putting together this program to utilize our current texting capabilities and to try to share with our consumers the different deals that are available with our businesses who sign on to participate, so that this is a service that we are offering our businesses that they can do without an upcharge and try to connect with more consumers in more and different ways. We hope to have that program in its full pilot launch state by October the 4th, which is another promotion called Buy Nearby. This is a day that is, it's an extended program, but October 4th is the launch date. It is put together by the Michigan Retailers Association and it's meant to be a reminder to everybody to buy local, buy nearby. Don't drive far away to get what you need. Get it in your hometown. And we are partnering with them to promote that and bring it to town. Look for the big blue Michigan in our businesses to remind you to spend your dollars right here in Ferndale. Then Buy Nearby leads us right into Downtown Ferndale Restaurant Week and that will be October 6th through the 12th. We're happy to say we've got about 18 restaurants that are going to be offering deals for that week. Once again, Downtown Ferndale is distinguishing itself from other restaurant weeks by offering breakfast on the menu plus lunch and dinner at price points of $10, $20, and $30. So this is all coordinated by Beth Hussey at One Eye Betty's and she's done a great job of getting our restaurants to get on the same page because that's like nearly impossible. Not that they don't want to work together, but we've got so many different cuisines that it really is a monumental effort that everybody wants to get in on and so she structured it in such a way that everybody can and it's very exciting. It's our third one, third restaurant week. So we have it in the spring and the fall, so this is a fall addition, but it's the 6th through the 12th. You can find out details at downtownferndale.com. Okay, then, never ends. Then we have Bito Dust Ferndale, I mean, it's always busy. Bito Dust Ferndale is third Thursday, October 16th. This is a dog's night out and it's really a great time for all of our four-legged friends and their owners. Your best friend will have a howling good time at the pooch parade, doing pet tricks for prizes, loading up on treats. Oh, I forgot, I have a visual with this one. I'll put it right here. Loading up at treats at the Canine Treasure Hunt, which are at all the different retailers throughout downtown, or simply strutting their stuff down Nine Mile. We have vendors that are dog-friendly. They have dog clothes and collars and all kinds of cool stuff. And so we also have a special guest, Xander Michigan, who will lead in song and fun at the festivities on the stage, which will be located on Planet Von. That's where all the tricks will take place. Again, you can find out more about that at downtownferndale.com. Okay, not done yet, almost to the end of the month. A week later, on Saturday, October 25th, it's time for the kids. And as we have done for the past few years, we're going to have Downtown Ferndale Trick or Treat Night for costume kids and their parents. This will run from 4:00 to 6:00 and you can see the signage at the businesses who are participating. It's a fun event. It's really low-key, but it's really fun to see all these kids dressed up and ready to go and have a good time and it's on a Saturday night. Again, details at downtownferndale.com. Two more things and I'm done. Holiday Hoop, November 22nd. Registration is now open. I encourage everybody to get involved. It's a hoot. It's an obstacle run and a fun walk. It's holiday-themed. It's good times. You can go to active.com to register for that. And one last thing is that the DDA is selling blue spruce trees. I know this is kind of off, but we have some beautiful blue spruces that were used in planters that now need to be repurposed. And if you want one, they're really a good deal at $50. They're nice and big and they're going to grow really tall and you can call our office at 248-546-1632 and we will be happy to make a deal. So that's it. Anything about Downtown Ferndale, we hope to have on downtownferndale.com and if you have any questions, I can maybe answer them.
Anyone have any questions, Chris? Covered your gamut, right there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lot going on. I noticed our county commissioner is with us this evening and so I always like to give her an opportunity to speak during presentation to tell us what's going on in terms of Oakland County.
Thank you. I'm just going to add the laundry list of things going on. First of all, I do want to talk a little bit about the proposed Great Lakes Water Authority. If people want to learn more, you can go to the Oakland County website. Front page on the left-hand side, there's a link to Great Lakes Water Authority. And this is the proposal that came out of the federal court mediation. And on October 8th, I will be taking a vote whether Oakland County should join this authority or not. I did try and do a form to educate people, but we have such a short period of time, dates, locations, it didn't work. But I do encourage people to read and. But I do encourage people to read and learn as much as they can. They're also under Board of Commissioners. There was a meeting last Thursday at 11:00, and there, it's webcast, where you have the Water Resource Commissioner and Brooks Patterson, the two top deputies that were sitting at the negotiation table, and they did Q and A. Anybody has any questions, please contact me, and I will make sure that though, that particular question is answered. So, next. I want to remind residents about a wonderful program that we talked about before. It's called the Step Forward Program. And what this does is people who are having trouble with their taxes or their mortgage payment, they could be eligible for up to $30,000. And criteria could be owner-occupied homes, mortgage deficiency, hardship, not having cash reserves. The amazing news is that in Ferndale, there were 24 applicants that applied for this money, and there was over $207,000, $207,000 that were received by these residents. In Oakland County in total, there were 638, quote, submitted, over $5 million worth of help in this program. So if you are interested in the program, you can call, you can go online to www-stepforwardmichigan.org. You also can go see a certified housing counselor, and we do have them at the Community and Home Improvement Department in Oakland County. We also have one in South Olshaw. In Pontiac has certified counselors, not local, not here. We also, there's other agencies. So, and again, if you want more information, feel free to contact me as well. I do want to remind people, it's been posted, there is going to be a mental health first-age training at the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Center. It is a South Oakland County collaborative. We have the coalitions around here, youth assistance, several commissioners promoting this program. It's grant-funded, it's evidence-based, it's Thursday, October 2nd, 9th, 16th. It's eight hours of training. You will learn what to look for, you know, and more importantly, what to do. And this particular training is geared toward those adults who work with youth or are connected to youth. I'd love to see coaches, different, you know, religious groups, you know, youth groups, recreation center people come and get trained. So if you want to register, you can call (858) 0051 to register. Couple of other quick things that are going on in the community. The Annual Area Agency on Aging Solutions Family Caregivers Expo is Saturday, October 18th, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. It will be at the Sterling Inn Banquet Conference Center, which is in Sterling Heights on Van Dyke. This is a wonderful program. They have lots of different topics for caregivers, protect your loved ones from long-term care costs, hoarding, what you, when you don't know where to turn for help, caregiver survival, and so forth. Finally, there's another program coming up, sponsored by Board of Commissioners and others, on human trafficking. This will be on November 13th, and professional training on the 14th. And it's sponsored by commissioners and a collaborative effort. There will be a guest speaker, Teresa Flores, who's the author of The Slave Next Door. She herself was a human trafficking victim. And let me tell you, it is a problem in Oakland County. There have been busts in places, Southfield, Madison Heights. It's much more pervasive than any of us know. So if you're interested, you can call up (858) 0051, or go to the Board of Commissioners website. That's it for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions of, of the line? Thank you, Commissioner. All right, that concludes our presentations this evening. Moving on to the next item is a public hearing on the establishment of an industrial development district at 810 Rosewood. And Derek Delacorte, our Director of Community and Economic Development, is going to introduce that item.
Yes, I'd be glad to. The project that kind of keeps on giving, and we've talked about extensively lately. What you have in front of you is a public hearing and a resolution to establish what's called an Industrial Development District under PA 198, the state's acts. It allows, it establishes a district in which the city can then consider different types of tax-exempt certificates, either a PA 198, which is for real and personal property, or potentially a PA 328, which we've dealt with recently in a couple of different areas, that exempts any new property for a facility. So you have two agenda items in front of you. The first is a public hearing and then the establishment of the district. That then allows the applicant or the owner of the property or a tenant to request one of those two exemptions. The second item is a tax exemption request for Allied Printing for a rather large piece of new equipment, personal property, and I'll let them describe it a little bit in a minute, that will be landing at the 810 Rosewood facility. So we're here to talk about both. The first is the establishment of the district, and then is a exemption request for that personal property for a period not to exceed six years, which has been standard practice here in the city. And we would suggest, and I believe they're on the agenda, to take each individual item individually, the establishment of the district and the exemption. I don't know if, we do have Allied Printing here to talk about their business operations and how things have changed, and what this equipment does. I don't know if you prefer them to do that under the first agenda or the second.
Yeah, no, let's do that now, and then I do have to open it up for public comment, but it'd probably be helpful for the, for the public to hear a little bit about what you've got planned, so.
Margaret Fitzgerald and Tony Popple from Allied Printing.
Great, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for putting us on the agenda. We really appreciate it. Allied has been in business since 1952, over 60 years. And I don't know how much you know about the commercial printing industry, but it's a mature industry, and it's undergone, undergone a tremendous evolution with the impact of technology. What happened about a year ago is we rebranded our company with the idea that that was going to lay the foundation for the business expansion that we're in the middle of right now, and we intend to be in the middle of, of, for quite some time. We branded ourselves as Rethink Inc., as Scott Per, leaders and educators about the role that print plays in, in communication in, in our world. And we've been very successful with that, and so this is the next phase. In March of this year, we moved our current fulfillment operation out of our Rosewood facility into a new building on Wanda, and that was a fantastic move for us. And that provided us with the ability then to look at renovating this current building to make it a state-of-the-art digital direct mail center. We looked at several pieces of different lines of equipment. What we're going to be putting on the floor when all is said and done is a high-speed continuous inkjet press that's going to be a game changer. There's no commercial printer in the state of Michigan, and I don't think many in the Midwest region who have this kind of equipment. It's going to allow Allied Printing to become much more viable and stronger as a business entity, not only in the city and in the county, but in the region for years to come. This is going to enable us to bring back work that's currently going out of state and bring it back here in-state. Our current equipment investment and, and facilities as well is almost $7 million, and that's for Phase 1. It includes the renovation of the building, as well as several pieces of equipment, the centerpiece being this, this high-speed continuous inkjet press. That's Phase 1. Phase 2 would be the continued build-out of this facility and further equipment. We're going to be able to do this high-speed continuous inkjet. That's going to allow us to really grow our direct mail business. It's also going to allow us to grow the other two business units, which is traditional, conventional print, and we have some proprietary products in that area, as well as grow our warehousing fulfillment operation. We're proud to be taxpayers in the city of Ferndale, and, and we look for this to be a benefit not only for our business, but for the community and even for the state. Do you want to add anything?
The only thing I'd like to add is that, you know, our five-year growth plan, we're prepping the facility to receive two of these pieces of equipment. So we're talking about $7 million worth of investment at this moment in time, but over the course of the next three to five years, you're probably looking at another $5 to $7 million in, in additional investments. And that's why we think that this would really be a very good thing for us and the Ferndale community. Part of what we're going to do as educators and innovators is identifies, it identifies us as being leaders in technology, so we expect to bring in some high-tech jobs as well, as well as some general labor as well. So we're looking for very good things in a very short period of time here.
Great. And with that, before we get to discussion or questions of council, I would like to open up the, the public portion of this and ask if there is anyone from the public that would like to address the council on this item this evening?
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
There's nothing worse than stray pennies, stray cats, and old social workers. Adopting a resolution establishing an industrial development district at 810 Rosewood. I don't know where 810 Rosewood is, but is there anything around that area that is residential? Does this impact any housing, any private property?
Be on the other side of the tracks, 810 Rosewood's east of the tracks, just north of Hilton on the west side. Just west, just north of Nine Mile, I mean.
North of Nine Mile.
Nine Mile.
Okay, and there's, there's no residential housing in that area?
It'd be on the other side of railroad tracks.
Okay.
I think Derek's got a map.
By the other side of the railroad tracks, residential housing on the other side of the railroad tracks.
Not, not even a gall shot.
Pardon?
Too long for a gall shot.
All depends on who's hitting it.
Well, if it's me, it's going to take a while to get it.
I just might be able to do it then.
Sounds like a challenge, yeah. That's right. Thank you, Katie. Is there anyone else from the, Derek, did you want, no?
I was just, I was just going to add, the, the building is traditionally been used as industrial. It is surrounded by industrial or commercial development on all sides. There is no residential just development, housing of any kind within, that abuts or is adjacent to the property at all.
Anyone else from the public that would like to address council on this issue? All right, I will close the public hearing portion and ask council if they have any comments or questions on this item.
I don't.
No. I actually need to talk to Dan, whether or not this is an issue for me, but Mr. Pelk is actually my cousin, first cousin, so do I need to abstain?
I was here first.
Are you asking to be apologized to Mr. Pelk?
My own, I'm the first.
Your Honor, through the chair, I, I don't think that is a, an interest that would be such that you would have to abstain from the vote. Certainly, I think it's appropriate that you brought it to, to council's attention. So I think your deliberation on the matter that's going to be before council could take place, you have no financial stake with respect to the outcome of council action this evening. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you for letting us know.
Sure.
Question for Derek. Would, is this process similar to the one that we did at the last meeting? And is the relationship with the proposed changes to the person, to the property, the personal property tax, the same, the same in that if that is, this is sort of a stopgap to make sure that that goes through as it's anticipated?
We fully expect, as with the previous 328 we did, that proposal one, once implemented, would relieve the personal property burden associated with this purchase, if it's implemented as approved. But there is, there is question, and we don't believe that that'll be in place for 2015 personal property taxes. This equipment most definitely will be in place, and most likely at the previous one. And then, as we mentioned it before, we, we are recommending approval of these until we actually see the final implementation of that legislation and how it impacts our business communities.
Yeah, sure. All right.
I do have a follow-up question. I know that we passed this for a previous business at our last meeting, but we didn't create an industrial development district. Can you explain the nuanced difference there, please?
PA 328, the personal property exemption, allows you to have that exemption in several pre-established districts. One of them is a downtown development district or a DDA. Another one is in a brownfield redevelopment district, which 965 Wanda has been established as previously, or an industrial development district, which without having either a downtown development district or a brownfield necessity, the IDD is the simplest way to establish the district. Both of those districts were established previous, both the DDA for the Vester site for Valentine's and the brownfield district for the 965 Wanda. So there was no need to establish a district in either one of those circumstances.
Okay, so just let me make sure, the district is not just their Rosewood property, it's...
This one is, will be.
This one is.
Correct.
Okay, so when was the last time we approved another IDD?
Was 12/20 West Nine Mile, Mile for Garden Field. East Nine Mile. For East Nine Mile, correct. That was the last one where we established a district prior to the exemption.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Other questions?
I, I would just make the comment, it wasn't long ago, we were celebrating an important milestone anniversary for Allied. We appreciate how long you've been in our community, and I certainly appreciate that you're growing and investing here, and investing in, in, in infrastructure and in jobs. And Margaret personally has been an active member of the Mayor's Business Council. I appreciate that, so thank you for your, your commitment to Ferndale. Marty, would you call the roll, please? Oh, I'm sorry, we have, I closed that, but we have to, I need a motion, actually.
I move that City Council approve the attached resolution establishing an industrial development district located at 810 Rosewood.
I support.
Move by Marty and supported by Piana. Final comments?
Just that I will be abstaining from this vote, just if anybody's questions my ethics. But I do want to state that they've been an incredible partner with the city, been with the city for a long time, and as far as I know, your, Allied is not located in any other city. All of your development is, is here, right here in Ferndale.
That is correct.
And, and it was exciting we were able to accommodate you at 965 Wanda, which was, as everybody knows by now, this huge vacant space that has been repurposed into a number of different people, including Valentine Distillery, which was here last, Brass Aluminum, and, and you folks as well. And you're the first ones in the building and operating and functional, and I'm glad we were able to find some space for you, so.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Marty, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulder.
Yes, thank you. That, that resolution is adopted.
And I will go on to the next one.
Thank you.
All right. I move to approve the attached resolution, resolution granting and exemption of new personal property to Allied Printing Company for a period not to exceed six years, and authorize the city clerk to sign and submit the application to the State Tax Commission.
Said it.
Moved by Piana and supported by Lennon. Any discussion on that item? All right, hearing none. Marty, would you call the roll?
Is Councilmember Republican still staying?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulder.
Yes, thank you. That item is also adopted. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, our next item of business would be call the audience. Call the audiences for those folks here. In the audience, your opportunity to come in and address council on any item, any topic that you liked that's not on the agenda, because if it's on the agenda, we'll let you speak to it when we get there. You get three minutes. State your name, your address, if you're comfortable doing so, or write your address in the back so our clerk has it, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Brian Pressley, 305 West Troy. There in the corner, Alan. Obviously, come tonight to speak a little bit about the proposed structure there at the parking lot behind Rosie's. I disagree with the initial plan shown at Russ Vault, and I listened to all the individuals who had some statements, very reasonable statements they made, and, and I look forward to the second phase that you guys are going to present to us, and, and I trust your judgment that you incorporate some of the things they said into changing, hopefully changes some of the things you showed.
And just, not that we will, but their developer will. It's, I mean, it's his plans.
And I don't know the, you know, the context of, you guys vote at the end, how does it finally approve, it's you guys, right?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so.
It is.
You know, in subsequent meetings, I'll have some things to say about Ms. Piana's statement from a couple of weeks ago regarding the issue, but today, you know, living so close, I'm just going to speak about the emotional aspect, why I don't... close, I'm just going to speak about the emotional aspect, why I don't like the plan as it's stated. You know, I have a little garden right there, and I grow a decent amount of food, something to supplement, you know, something to grow and enjoy doing. And people ask me, how do I get so much? You know, 60 pounds of tomatoes in such a small little area? And it's because of the sun. A lot of them don't get that sun that they get, you know, in their backyard that I get right there. And obviously, that structure is to my east now. You know, this has been a problem for a century. The agrarian interests always lose to the, you know, the moneyed interests, we could say. But what I see is very black and white to me. Seven individuals who have the potential to diminish the quality of my life. Because if I grow less food, I have to work more as an entrepreneur, which means I spend less time with my daughter. So emotionally, that's where I'm at with this. Now, you know, like I said in the subsequent meetings, we'll speak about potential, potential growth and all those other intricacies of the economics that, you know, are important to make a decision like this. But, I just wanted to give my opinion on that, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming. Good evening.
Good evening. Sherry Wells, next door to Brian at 315 West Troy. In my garage, in the cement, had been written when they laid that cement there, Mom, Dad, the names of four children and a question mark. So, at one time, my house held seven people. At this point, it holds one. I've attended every DDA board meeting for over four years recently. I attended all four sessions of the Oakland County Main Street Conference, learned a lot. I attended the National Main Street Conference this summer at my expense as well as my time. One of the things that I saw in the National Main Street Conference, a lot of these communities want to have what we already have in Ferndale, but in none of their wish lists was their high-rises mentioned. High-rises were not mentioned in the Oakland County Main Street Conference, density was, but not high-rises. Trying to keep the character, part of Main Street is the historical aspects of our downtowns. One of the things that I did hear in the Oakland County part was, a way of getting density is through housing. Two women I knew wanted to live in Ferndale or stay in Ferndale, and what they wanted was flats, not apartments, but flats that had wood around the doors and windows, which is what I specifically like about my bungalow. And there are, what I heard, that there are ways of encouraging people to turn their bungalow, for example, into two families. There's several of them on my block, and preferably if you have the landowner living in one of those two flats, because then it doesn't turn into a rental, which is about the tone of voice that it's normally spoken at. And that's what we don't want. So that is one of the solutions for density, that would keep the character of Ferndale that is claimed that they want, the character that will draw people, instead of ruining the character by this high-rise plan. As a PS to something I said two weeks ago, I heard from one of the seniors who lives in Willington West, that shortly after the last city council meeting, someone between 1:30 and 2:30 in the morning, in his loudest voice yelled, "Everybody wake up." So that's what we are already wanting to invite more people to.
Do what she says, Paul, I'm telling you.
Don't mess with Katie.
Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. Dan Martin, you have my respect.
Thanks.
Here, I have a delinquent notice from the city of Ferndale. It states, "Past due notice, please remit the past due amount within five business days of receiving this notice." There is no date on this document, there is no date on the envelope it was mailed in. This notice was received on or about September the 10th. The due date for this water bill was August 24th, 2014. This notice also includes a termination date of October 16th, 2014. This notice also states unpaid water sewer charges are added to the July and December tax bills with an additional penalty charge once the balance is six months old according to state law. Again, the due date was August 24th. The payment for 9830, which was here, was paid to the city of Ferndale on August 25th, which technically was one day late. The date of this notice, again, is on or about September the 10th, 16 days after you received the payment. April Lynch, will you please state in a letter the employee's name and title who processed this document? Also, in your letter, please explain what is going to be terminated on October the 16th. Note needs to be taken that city hall was closed on August 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. By the way, this delinquent notice is for $9.83. I call this intimidation. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Katie?
So far, I've been real quiet about the parking structure, whole talk, the 360 project. And, I'm not the biggest proponent of parking structures, but I'm not totally against them. I realize that in many areas, there are a necessity. But I have an idea that I think that, one thing, I think, whatever, if they put up something like that, it has to be appealing in the community. And I hope that that is something that is, a lot of thought is being put into. But I think I would like to see something that leaves ground-level parking that is open with structure supports, to have a parking structure on a second and a third level. So that people who want to only be in that spot for 10 minutes to run inside and buy a pack of cigarettes at one of those smoke shops, does not have to drive up any ramps or manage to walk, ride down, whatever. So that you had that open area, so that there is an open parking with the same meters that now people are now used to, so that they can run in, buy whatever they want, and go right back out. Then having a couple floors of parking, a couple floors of commercial development, if you want, and have the commercial development parking on the roof, and not have any apartments in it whatsoever. I think that would give us adequate parking for the amount of spaces that we would need for many of the activities in downtown. I know when downtown has an event, there, it is hard to find a parking spot. But I think that would satisfy the needs of people having easy access to those businesses that are open, especially the daytime businesses, but also give, you know, at least two floors, maybe even a third floor of parking, but have the commercial people, if you have commercial buildings in there and offices, a space to park on the roof, leaving those other two levels of parking open for the people to use the nine-mile district in the daytime. I think that would be one of the kind of options that could be looked at to maybe satisfy some of the needs. I realize that we don't have a lot of places to put commercial, white-collar businesses with as much space as you could get using a structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you back too, by the way. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Linda Whitman. I live at 644 Vester. I also own 640 Vester. I'm right next to the railroad tracks, I'm in the area where search optics is expanding. And I would like to get an idea on how soon they're planning on moving, because I have a lot of issues of my own. I'm fighting leukemia, I'm taking care of my father who's mentally two years old.
I'm sorry.
He just had his nice, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nine stroke. So, I want to know how fast they're going to move, you know, what their plans are.
Did Derek leave?
Yes, he did.
He's talking to Allied. We can, if I can have Joe take your name and number, I'll have Derek.
Yeah, we'll have them call you. Derek would have known, but he's out.
Okay, and I have another question.
Sure.
Okay. Right across the street from my house, I was told, well, it used to be the old train station, I was told it was historical property.
Really?
Uh-huh. And then I was informed by-
Amtrak used to pick up there, but I don't think that's historical.
Well, the other people that had owned it said the city wouldn't let them tear it down because it was historical property. Because back in the, in the past, that's where our soldiers had left to go to war. They got on the train right there at the train station and went to go to war.
Yeah, I do know they were picking up there in the 80s.
No, this was way before then, I've been in-
Well, I know, I'm seeing that, but I mean-
I've been there 35 years.
They stopped picking up there, you know, late 80s.
Yeah. I, Little Bird told me, I can't say who said, that they're going to tear the hill down possibly next week, week after, and that the city approved them to dump all the dirt next to my house.
I don't know.
The property used to be owned by Detroit Edison next to my house. I know there's high-power lines buried underneath the ground there, and I don't think it'd be safe to be putting all that dirt on top of it. It might destroy some of our electrical problems we've already got. But, you know, I just, I don't want all that dirt next to my house.
Right. We are going to have to look into that, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you right now, but we will get an answer for you, and if you could leave, yeah, leave Joe your contact information, we'll definitely be sure to get a hold of you.
Okay.
All right.
All right, because I've been there 35 years, and you know, you-
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else would like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda are those items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless somebody on council removes one of the consent agenda items. Let me read them for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meeting held September 8th, 2014. Item B is the approval of a special event permit for the 2014 Holiday Hoof on Saturday, November 22nd, 2014. Item C is the approval of a special event permit for the 2014 Holiday Ice Festival on Saturday, December 13th, 2014. Item D is the approval of a special event permit for the Dress Like the Devil, Run for the Angels, 5K, and Fun Run on Saturday, October 11th, 2014. Item E is the approval to pay CPR connection invoice 1508 for $2,953.50 as submitted by the fire chief. Item F is the approval of a purchase of 41 bulletproof vests from On Duty Gear for a total amount of $31,980, with $14,820 from the flood damage fund, and $8,580 from the drug forfeiture fund, and $8,580 paid through a federal BPV grant, and that was submitted by our chief of police. Item G is the adoption of a resolution recognizing Detroit Actors Theater Company as a nonprofit organization operating in the city of Ferndale. Item H is the approval of a one-year agreement to use the city's southwest storage yard as a transfer site for leaves by the cities of Oak Park, Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, and Lazer Village, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign such agreement. Item I is the approval of $3,350 to purchase two Windows 7 compatible computers to accommodate the Wonderware HMI software upgrade at the Hilton Road Pumping Station to be charged to the water sewer fund repair and maintenance account. Excuse me. Item J is the approval of a contract with Trolson Excavating Company of Troy to replace a water main on East Nine Mile from Paxton to Hilton, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract. Item K is the approval of the municipal and community credit contract for fiscal year 2015, and authorization for the mayor or designate to sign the contract. Item L is the approval to fill three police officer positions as submitted by our director of human resources. Item M is the approval for the city manager's office to produce and distribute a quarterly newsletter to Ferndale residents and businesses for an amount not to exceed $20,000, and funded by the general fund city manager's office account. And finally, item N is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Your honor?
Yes?
May I note that we do not have the minutes for you, so perhaps you should-
Okay, then we should remove that item and put it on the next agenda. So we'll remove item A until the following meeting. Thank you for pointing that out.
I'd like to remove M.
Remove item M? Mm-hmm. Okay.
And I would like to continue on the theme of not voting for a contract. So, I would just like if council would vote with, while I abstain on the, where is it? The Trolson?
Oh, yeah. J.
J.
So, if the city clerk could note that she'll abstain on J, well, how do you do that?
You have to remove it.
Oh, we have to remove it. So we'll remove item J so that we can vote and you can abstain. All right.
So J and M are being-
J and M removed, anything else?
A, J, and M, actually.
A, J, and M, thank you, yes. A, J, yes, A is not moved, but to this meeting, but to the next.
I, do you have questions that I'd like to hit on, on two?
Okay.
H and L?
But we need a motion first.
Okay.
I move that we accept the consent agenda item as amended, removing A, J, and M.
Support.
Okay, moved by Martin, supported by Polika. Yes, Councilman Polika.
Okay, I just wanted to make comment, because a lot of times, I'll ask some staff members questions outside of council, just to get some clarity, and I'm sure some council, some residents have questions that I, you know, same questions that I have. And one of them was, we gain about, through this contract, we get about $35,000 a year through those agreements. And we currently have an exclusive agreement with Oakland Housing for potentially building residential units on that site. And my question was, would we gain more out of taxes, or would we gain more out of using the property as it is? And I was assured that we would get more out of private property, creating it as private property, so.
I'm sorry, through the chair, may I ask for clarity about which agenda item the council is speaking to?
Oh, H, which is the approval of a one-year agreement to use the southwest storage yard as a transfer site for leaves.
Sorry about that. So then the other one was 7L, and my question is, the job description was-
And just so people know at home, that's the approval to fill three police officer positions.
Correct. The job description that was put into the, into the packet, was last revised in 1993. And my question is, the job description has not changed in 21 years?
Before that, it was updated in 1966. But no, it, it remains essentially the same, and there's no real additions to that. There are some things that we deleted in the 90s, but for the most part, we're comfortable with what it comes with right now.
Okay.
And I do believe that as time goes forward, I think that the Department is looking at updating all of those job descriptions to update on, as to what's going to happen, and that is probably on the list of things to do.
Okay.
We've been in the situation with that, you know, that we felt that that was appropriate for, we could do the same.
Okay, thank you.
It clearly looks like it was typed out on a typewriter.
Yes.
It probably was.
Police hasn't changed much in 30 years.
With that purple copy paper.
Just to add as commentary, when you do get about to replacing the job description, I believe ordinance indicates it's got to go through police and fire board as well.
Any other discussions, comments, questions on the consent agenda, from council or the audience? Yeah?
Good evening. My name is Joshua Miller. I'm the chairman of the board of directors of the Detroit Actors Theater Company. With me is our artistic director, Eric Swanson. This is in reference to consent agenda item 7G.
Yep.
We just wanted to come in tonight, thank the council for considering us for this agenda. We are trying to get a charitable gaming license to hold raffles at our productions, and make ourselves available in case the council had any questions. I figured with the, with it being on the consent agenda, there probably wouldn't be, but we wanted to be here just in case, so.
Well, since we have you here, just tell the world, or at least our little corner of it, what is the Detroit Actors Theater Company, and what do you do?
We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community theater based here in Ferndale. We currently rent space from the- We currently rent space from the Ferndale First United Methodist Church, um, over here on Woodward. Um, we seek to produce shows that have a moral and social justice aspect to them. Um, the most recent production we did was The Laramie Project and The Laramie Project ten years later. Uh, we also have a little bit of fun coming up in October. We are doing a shadow casting of the Rocky Horror Picture Show. Uh, that will be the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and thirtieth, all at eight P M.
And the moral aspect of that being?
Uh, that is our one show.
Just wondering.
Yes. Um, but then, uh, we also have, um, other things coming up. We, um, um, can we talk about? Okay, we also have Bear Apop Opera coming up in the winter or spring, um, dealing with LGBT issues of, so, uh, sort of a Romeo and Juliet type story, except LGBT, so.
Excellent.
Um, we are really hoping that, uh, we can get this license. We actually have our annual gala coming up, so anything the council can do to help us get there would be greatly appreciated.
Do you have a website, or can residents find out more about you?
Um, the website is theD A T C dot org.
Okay.
So, unless there are any questions, other questions?
Not questions, but through the chair, when you do have your annual gala, can you make sure council through the city knows when that's going on? Because you guys do awesome work, so that would be great if we could make sure we know when that's going on.
We will. And just for the, for a general announcement, it's Saturday, November first.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion on the consent agenda, uh, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Uh, moving on to the regular agenda item A is the consideration to appoint Todd Blankenship to the sidewalk hardship committee as the representative for the southeast quadrant of the city for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-fifteen.
I think Cheryl Lance is not here today, so, um, as you know, we have this committee that meets, I believe, once a year, twice a year, once a year for the sidewalk committee.
Yep.
And Todd Blankenship has agreed to, um, sit on this committee. He is actually here tonight. If you have any questions or you want to introduce him?
No, but we'll embarrass him and come on up and say hi, Todd.
Actually intended to, so.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, council and, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
As a resident of southeast Ferndale for nearly eleven years, and, uh, active community, community member, uh, currently serving as a member and secretary of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission, I think it's very important to, um, maintain the pedestrian-friendly and, uh, environment of Ferndale and, and continue to foster that. Uh, but I'm also sensitive to the needs of the community in terms of, uh, finances. Uh, I bought one of the worst houses on the street, and balancing the needs and wants versus what the city requires sometimes can be a challenge. So, I'm sensitive to that for the, uh, for the members of the community, and, uh, I appreciate your consideration. Do you have any questions?
I, I don't, except that you went to Ohio State, but we're gonna, we're willing to overlook that for-
Oh, man. Go Bucks. Throw that plug in there.
No, I really appreciate both your work on the FESC, which is more work than this committee's going to be.
Yes.
It's once a year, but we, we need, we need representation and we appreciate that you're stepping forward.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yeah. Uh, any questions or comments at council?
No, Todd has been, um, a wonderful member on the FESC, and, um, he will be a great representative on the sidewalk hardship committee. So, I move to confirm the appointment of Todd Blankenship to the sidewalk hardship committee as the representative for the southeast quadrant of the city for term ending December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen.
Support.
All right, moved by Piana and supported by Polika. Any other discussion? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Polika?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton.
Yes, item is adopted. Thanks again, Todd. Uh, regular agenda item B is a consideration to fill a director of community engagement position, and our city manager will introduce that item.
As you know, for the last, uh, quite a few years, we have been really trying to focus on how we can engage our community. And that is the big part of the title of this, uh, position is engagement. Um, we are looking at competing with other, um, other communities as well, for, for people to come and live here, to visit here, to work here, to, um, have their kids go to school here. And the, the face of government is changing so rapidly that this is one of the ways that we're trying to address that change, is that engagement is so much different now with our community than it ever has been before. It used to be, long time ago, you'd have, you could have this room filled with residents wanting to come in and, and talk about what's going on in their life and, and get that feedback. But nowadays, um, people's, our residents still want to get feedback, but in so many different ways. And I think that one of the ways that we can help with that engagement and keeping our residents engaged, so we keep the pulse in our community, keep people knowledgeable, um, I think these, um, disasters that we've been having over the last couple of years are another great segue to really finding a way that we can engage all of our residents in different ways. Um, especially since we have such varying levels of audience participation. We have some that have been here for a long time that don't want to use the computer, they watch cable, or they come into city hall. There's just, and then you have those that they just want to get on Facebook and, and offer their suggestions that way. But it is time now to really start taking a look at that word engagement and how we can really move, um, and continue moving Ferndale forward. And I think that this position is definitely one of the ways that we can do that. Um, so this position would really, um, very much focus on, uh, communication is a big part of it, but that engagement piece, and how do we engage those different audiences so that when we need that input, which we always do, that we can get that when we need to. And we had a couple of, um, things over the last couple of years that we did were a little different. For instance, this last spring, we did the, um, trying to get input on the parks. We did the QR codes, which was very different than what we've normally done. And we had a lot more feedback this time than we did the last time. We have master planning that's coming up over the course of the next year as well, that can use very different levels of communication and engagement. But I think that having this position on board and really focusing on how we can engage and keep people engaged in our community is going to be very, very important and very critical, uh, to, to the development of Ferndale, as well as, you know, we like, and one of the things that Ferndale likes to do very well is be the first one to do something. We're actually a little behind on this. Quite a few communities, Oakland County already have a, a position very similar to this. And when I called the city managers, I said, you know, what would you change? And they said, we would have done this years ago if we would have known the impact it would have. So, if you have any questions about this position or you want to talk about it further, I'm open for that right now.
Other questions for April?
Um, well, I, oh, I guess I have comments, so I guess we can make a motion.
So, yeah, questions, yeah, a motion before comment would be appropriate.
I move to approve the hiring of the position of director of community engagement and to be spread among various funds as stated in the call to action and subject to changes needed. Support.
Moved by, uh, Polika and supported by Martin. All right, now, comments, questions.
Well, I'm really excited that this position is actually at council to make a decision. Um, I've been frustrated as a councilwoman in the past year on a lot of certain circumstances in which we wanted to do more engagement outreach or inform residents in a new way and haven't had the capacity to do so. Um, and so I, I really support this new position. I think it is the right way to go with government transforming and responding to the new environment in which we face. I also like to think that this is growing, you call it community engagement, I call it being a responsive government. And we have always been trying to move toward being, uh, increasing our responsiveness and how we respond to and inform people about what we fix and how we fixed it and showing that it's fixed, right? And I think the, this community engagement, um, position is, um, building on that intention and making it stronger as a more responsive government. And so I'm really happy, um, that this is in place. And I know the FESC will probably want to take advantage of this position in, uh, helping communicate some of the programming, uh, like recycling, um, to our residents. And so that's one area of frustration that I've had that we haven't been able to build on to let people know how to take more advantage of the programs that we are offering.
I, I would-
Go ahead, Ed.
Sorry, I, I would, I would second that. I think this, this position's a long time coming for, you know, a number of reasons. We, we promote and try to push as much and as effective community engagement as we can get. And I know we all get frustrated with the old models of town halls or even some of the online activities. You've got people on the high end of the technolog- technological spectrum that engage in social media, and you've got people that don't engage technologically. And you've got to be able to reach all folks on that spectrum where they're at. It's not about them coming to us, it's about them going to them. It's about educating them on the issue and then having a real community dialogue. And there's just not capacity in the existing infrastructure to do that. And to get to that next step, I think we need the focus of a position like this. So, I'm really glad we're doing this. I, I agree with everything that councilwoman Piana said. And I, I think this is a really important next step for us that we, we probably should have taken some time ago.
Um, I did have one question. Um, I'm interested in learning a little bit more about the three one one online call center, uh, which sounds like a very interesting and, um, expansion of service, um, for our residents to notify us about what's not working out in the community. Um, so I was wondering if you could, uh, talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, I'm actually going to have Joe talk a little bit about-
Ah, don't get so scared. There's no slides.
There's no slides on this one.
No, no, that's not what we're-
The mention of the three one one call center is, is more referencing the need rather than the actual detailed position. The need is to have a, a place and a mechanism for residents to actually come to with their, with their calls for service requests. Um, it could, it could take many shapes. Uh, it could take the shape, the form of a, of a mobile application that would enable somebody to submit a request for service while they're in the field and they actually see something that they would like to report. It could take the shape of a dedicated phone number that could be responded to or dedicated message center. It could take many shapes, but what we do know is that there is a need for an entity, a centralized entity, and a centralized resource for residents to voice their concerns to.
This helps eliminate the phone tree. Like, just, it's, go right to this place and we can get you to the right position.
Yeah, I think we're actually really excited to work with whoever the selected community engagement director is, to get their ideas and their opinions on what their observations and their needs, uh, you know, that they, they believe we might-
Councilman Lennon?
Ah, go ahead, Boba.
Yeah?
Yeah, right.
If I may, then I'd like to make a comment off of Joe's. I think that's all great and I, I applaud that. Don't be afraid to look into collaboration, though, because call centers get economy of scale with, with size, right? So, we are of a size of a community. It may not be practical for us to do this alone or walk this block alone, but certainly for a South Oakland County solution, it may make more regional sense, so.
Yeah.
Again, I'd love to share technology and leadership to do that.
Yeah, yep.
I think there's an app for that.
Sure there is.
Um, and I don't-
And that's another thing that they can manage.
Um, and my final comment is, is that, and I've been telling, uh, a couple of people about cities, that our general fund is eighteen million dollars approximately. What organization do you know, public, private, has an eighteen million dollar organization with no director of communicate, communications or community engagement? And, um, to me, it's just a modern thing to do. Otherwise, you become uncompetitive.
Well, and, and I would just add to that. It's a modern thing to do, I guess. It's, it's critical to the way we do business now. It's, it's not just about the old days of rewrite the regulations and you follow them. Uh, we, we literally need the community's input and engagement, uh, and a two-way dialogue in order to make this work most effectively for everybody. So, it is an integral, and, and we've done it piecemeal. It's not that we don't engage. And Joe's done a wonderful job with the website and, and other technologies. And we piecemealed it here and there. We learned our way through the electrical, uh, power outage a few years ago. Uh, but we need a coordinated and professional effort to communicate and engage our residents. And so I'm very supportive of this position, and I'm excited about the, what, what they'll help us do.
Thank you.
Any final comments or questions? All right, uh, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Uh, item C is the consideration of a part-time onsite IT support position through Republic Parking. And Joe, you're going to introduce that item.
Yes, good evening, city council. I do want to highlight that tonight we're going to be presenting the concept, just so you understand what direction we will be recommending that the city move towards. Um, if, uh, acceptable, we will be bringing back a agreement, uh, that has been approved by the city attorney in, uh, in October. So, on that note, and following closely to the previous item, um, the city is looking at developing a first shared IT support position. It is the first, uh, on-premise information technology position that the city's had. Um, I kind of want to walk us back a little bit to the beginning of the year, uh, and kind of look at the, the beginning of, of, uh, what began, how, how we've gotten to where we are now. And that really began with the understanding of the Windows XP problem. It's interesting that the phase out of this XP problem is what provided the spark to really what's evolved aggressively over the last six months with regards to our technology. Um, as mentioned in, in the beginning of the year, the XPs, uh, were slated to go out of life in April two thousand fourteen. And the city, like many other governments, actually did not have a replacement plan, um, to, to head this problem off. So, uh, that began an immediate triage, needing to replace priority workstations immediately and then, uh, the rest of the city concurrently. Um, the immediacy of the problem led to, uh, a budgetary analysis as well. We didn't have a plan. We didn't have a capital improvement plan with regards to the technology. So, that led us to analyze the entire city budget and kind of understand that information technology needs were dispersed throughout departments and not really tracked from a centralized budget point. Um, so what we learned during this analysis is that, uh, there was no actual IT budget organization. There were various line items in various departments for budget, uh, for technology budget items. Uh, there were several, kind of grouped together and under general communications or general phones, um, but no real ability for the city to have any visibility of what our technology annual capital spending was or operational spending. Um, we did learn that few departments had, uh, actual equipment or systems on a replacement schedule. So, uh, that is, has been and will continue to be, um, an issue that we will, we will resolve. Uh, there was no coordinated, coordinated standardization between the departments or any of the municipal buildings. So, our technology needs were very dispersed and, with different standards. Um, we did lose a strategic long-term investment plan, uh, not lose, rather, just, it didn't really exist. Um, so really what we've done since is, is begin to knock those items off and with the end game of really achieving a long-term strategic technology investment goal. Uh, we've done so by establishing the city's first information technology budget organization. We pulled a lot of those information technology needs into this one budget line item and, and defined those lines very specifically to be very clear on where the city is investing its IT dollars. Um, we, uh, incorporated a IT agency agreement with Republic Parking during the February agreement. Uh, the corporate IT director is housed out of Ann Arbor for Republic Parking. So, we saw an opportunity there to get some general consulting, um, ability out of Republic Parking as well as our parking services. Um, we have since then incorporated an enterprise-level, uh, network reconstruction, uh, for the city. So, now all the city municipal buildings are operating on the same network standard, using standardized devices that are enterprise-grade Cisco Meraki devices. Uh, since June, we've been able to replace thirty-six of the Windows XP stations. We currently have about twenty-four more in the current process that we're still working on replacing. We've also standardized high-speed internet throughout the city. Um, different internet service providers were providing internet services for different city buildings. We've since then standardized every building. Um, and we also did budget during this, uh, original information technology budget session for some planned IT support for on-premise support, uh, that was budgeted for this current fiscal year. Um, in addressing this, we have identified a shared services possibility, uh, with the Ann Arbor DDA, who uses Republic Parking for, uh, their information technology support as well as their parking management. Um, having similar needs and a similar service provider only made sense to reach out to Republic and Ann Arbor DDA to see if there were any opportunities for us. And we, uh, as noted in the call for action, we did find some opportunities and some common ground. And we believe that we have a construct for an agreement that would, uh, see, uh, dedicated Ferndale information technology support on-premise, three days a week. Um, this would be for a one-year trial period. Uh, there would be roughly in Ann Arbor, two days per week. Of course, this could be adjusted, uh, with flexible scheduling if there was a project that was imminent on each, uh, agent's behalf. Um, but the, the greatest advantage of this shared service is that it gives us an opportunity to really slow-walk the information technology support position. We haven't had an on-premise position. We've always had, uh, contractual relationships of various kinds. So, this is really our opportunity to kind of slow-walk our way and see what our needs are and really see what on-premise support looks like before we consider investing long-term. And I wanted to just take an opportunity, uh, Republic Parking's information technology director is here. His name is Stephen Smith. Stephen has been vital for consulting the city and helping us really- Stephen has been vital for consulting the city and helping us really move generations ahead within six months. And I would like to invite any questions or observations at this time.
All right, other questions of Joe or anyone else?
I think it's important to note one thing too as well is when we did budget, we budgeted before we knew the magnitude of some of the IT issues that we had. So we actually did budget for a full-time in-house person. And with a shared agreement, it'll be half the cost that we had actually budgeted for.
Very good to know.
Yeah. I can't believe I neglected to say that.
Yeah.
We did find considerable savings. I had budgeted for a full-time position based on a five-year trend of past contractual costs annually, and we will significantly underwrite that.
Through the chair, I don't have any questions, but since Steve's here, is there anything he wants to say?
Just thanks for the opportunity. I think we've been able to achieve a lot so far and moving forward to the rise of this next challenge in five-year day-to-day needs, which I think are there, you know, like onsite. I've heard it from every department. I'm excited. Appreciate it. We've been able to achieve a lot of things that we've achieved.
We've received general positive feedback and recognition from department heads who have received the benefit of the advice from the Republic Parking's IT team and our networking team that we've assembled over the last six months. And I'm very, very pleased to bring back a recommendation for you in the next couple of weeks so we can really move this football forward.
I have a couple of questions.
All right.
What we learned, I know that we did not have a good handle on managing our IT infrastructure, but at some point, someone was providing IT support to staff. And so I was wondering what the cost difference is from our, someone's had to provide it before through a contract position. How much were we paying for that and how much, you know, is that going forward in the new part-time?
Much of it interchanged because it was very project management oriented. So it would really depend on the nature of the projects that were being approved during that year. We don't really have a way to really understand the general support needs because we didn't have the general support. We had emergency response support or project management support. But I think the biggest takeaway is that we were managing our information technology moving forward and it's not managing us anymore. This is a proactive approach to a problem that we've always used a reactive approach to.
We had a range though. I mean, he's true, it did spike. It wasn't, because it was a consultant, it would depend. So we did have a range. I think we ranged anywhere from...
Yeah, the general five-year that I did budget for would be an average of $57,000 to $59,000 per year.
Did you have another question?
No, just a comment that I think the shared position idea is something that we've always tried to do with other communities, and this is just a really interesting one versus, you know, shared library or, I'm sorry, wrong service. You know, shared DPW or some other service. So, and this is not an adjoining community, so I just thought that was interesting.
A motion would be in order before we get into too far into comments.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I'll move that we approve the IT support concept presented here and by the Chief Innovation Officer and to direct the City Manager's Office to bring forth a formalized agreement to be recommended for approval during an October city council meeting. Support.
移到 by Martin and supported by Pollock. Other comments?
I just want to say that I am so glad that we are moving forward in this direction. I don't think this is the process that I would have taken over the last couple of years, but we did, we needed to definitely get here. And it's not a bad thing, the way that everything's happened, because so much was undocumented and it gave Joe a chance, who's worked over the last year and a half, two years, trying to get all of this in order. It's very hard to hire someone with chaos going on and then expect them to solve it. So I'm glad that you were able to solve a lot of this so that when Republic can now take over, there's a plan, there's an action. We have some history and we know the direction that we need to move forward. So I think this is a great, a great opportunity.
All right, any last comments or questions?
I look forward to the agreement. Because we're approving a concept.
Right.
We just didn't want to waste any more time or energy.
I get it, I get it. I'm glad you did that because you're repositioning us to...
An interesting concept takes a little longer to develop the agreement, so.
All right, Marty, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers, Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Item D is related. It's a consideration of, well, same folks anyway, the consideration of a parking agreement addendum. And Joe, you want to explain that item?
Yeah, I'll just stay up here again. We did have an agreement for this relationship worked out. If you recall, in July 2014, I had gave a presentation on the parking system with a general update for Councilwoman Lennon. I chose not to give another presentation this evening.
He still reads that every...
Yeah, I go through it all the time. Takes about an hour and a half.
Enjoyable evening reading.
Yeah.
So to spare you of that misery, I just wanted to kind of summarize what I had mentioned in July of 2014. And that is that, building on the success of the current management agreement with Republic Parking and the successful feedback we've received from several various types of customers at the downtown area on Republic Shop, we'd like to further incorporate some other services into the service portfolio with Ferndale. We'll speak on two of those tonight, and that's parking enforcement and parking collections. Republic does have many years of experience working with several municipalities with parking enforcement and as it relates to parking collection for both Dunkin', mechanical meters that we currently have in the downtown as well as the Luke, well, especially the Luke 2s pay stations that we have in our downtown. I wanted to touch on three points of return on investment that I think we wanted to focus on, and that focused first on the businesses. We do believe that a coordinated, a coordinated management team with, between parking enforcement, between the parking ambassadors as well as collections could better serve our downtown business customers, actually making sure that we improve the availability of parking in the downtown by reducing over-the-time limits, meter feeding and otherwise unproven parking, prohibited parking violations. For residents, we do believe that this managed approach and this approach using a knowledge network of experience will help us improve our residential parking enforcement program along the streets that are adjacent to the downtown district. And for the Auto Parking Fund also has identified in the call for action, based on their experiences here and based on their actual operational experience, there's a projected net positive revenue of, for the Auto Parking Fund, given the parking enforcement and parking collection services brought by Republic Parking. Republic Parking will assume some current parking enforcement officers, so there won't be any job loss from that perspective. And those officers will be incorporated into the staffing and the scheduling programs of the Republic Enforcement Program. I would like to introduce Art Lowe, who's the Regional Director for Republic Parking, District Manager for Republic Parking, to speak more on the relationship and his past experiences with parking enforcement and some observations moving forward.
Hey?
Well, I think, I thank you for your time.
Yeah, welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be back. Joe and I have talked quite a bit about the different synergies that we bring to the table with regards to public enforcement with a public parking system, as we've talked about. And, you know, our vision was when we first were awarded the contract with the Ambassador Program, we were excited about that. And in that RFP, there were also the concept of additional duties that could be taken on at some later time. We envisioned that the Ambassador Program and the staffing that we would have would also be incorporated, or we would have the synergy of the staffing that would cover these additional job duties. So, you know, while there will be no loss as far as the current enforcement officers, we will increase the level of presence overall. And we're going to do things that we do around the country and in certain markets here in southeast Michigan that allow us to achieve some better synergies and some best business practices that we've learned have been beneficial. And that's not to say anything negative about the city operations. It's just things that we do in about 40 different cities around the country. But we do specialize, obviously, and I've mentioned this before, in the smaller markets. You know, those tier two, three, four type of markets, and certainly Ferndale fits into that. But I also think too, one of the things we have is with Stacy Meisner, who's our Operations Manager here, she started out with us in Ann Arbor as a tech. So she knows how to work on those meters. And I was just talking to her about that. I asked her if she still had her skill sets, and she assured me that she did. You know, one of the things that we did bring to the table was we had told the city, and Joe specifically, that the Luks, we have a long record of experience working on those machines. We don't have a service agreement with the service provider, the equipment vendor that sold to us in the city of Ann Arbor. And we told Joe too that we didn't need to necessarily look at that as an option. So those are some of the different things, I think, that we bring to the table beneficially from the financial side, but also from the expertise side. Again, keeping in mind, these, our employees that I mentioned, they may be collecting money, but they're also going to deal with patrons and their needs. And I think with that, we've got a win-win situation overall operationally.
I got a question. The PEOs that you're consuming from the city, are you reducing their pay at all?
No. The grandfather, their time and their pay in itself...
And the uniforms they're going to be wearing?
Well, we haven't gotten to that yet, but I think probably.
Probably.
Uniforms. We would...
Right now, they wear a Ferndale police badge on there.
Yeah. We haven't formalized a standard for the uniform.
Please keep me informed.
Do you have a preference? I mean, is it Republic?
I do. I prefer the, citizens want to see Ferndale police on. They feel a little more comfortable when they see somebody walking around with a Ferndale police badge on and radio and, that's my preference, but...
But they're not currently sworn officers.
Yeah, I was going to clarify, they're not sworn officers. They will be deputized and have the ability to issue citations, but they're not sworn.
But I mean, even the current ones are parking, are...
Correct. The current existing parking enforcement officers are not sworn.
Are also not sworn officers. Yeah, gotcha. Other questions, comments?
I also, before we move into questions, I did want to touch on the collections issue too. Just to really gloss over that and then we'll ask some questions for Art. But as mentioned in the previous presentation, our parking collection services, because of the Luks, the advantage that we can take of that technology, we've been able to really mitigate the amount of time it takes to actually collect all of our parking lots. Again, just a reminder, we reduced 1,200 meters down to 32 stations. So that really reduces the amount of points of collection. Secondly, these pay stations notify us when they want to be collected. So there's no more real guesswork. We can actually be very strategic about scheduling that time. So we've been able to actually narrow what was, collection services that were done on a daily basis to two mornings a week for three hours.
So that frees up some time for them to do other things. I was curious, Joe, because you touched on this, and it also says in the memo that this has the potential to address the needs of the residents living in the residential parking zones near the downtown, which has been an ongoing issue for those folks. Not enough enforcement in those areas. How do you see this impacting that issue?
Again, it's going to be a lot about presence and operations as well as an evolving investment in technology, including license plate recognition technology. But again, I'll let Art Lowe speak about his past experiences and his plan for addressing those needs.
And Art, you're familiar with our issue with parking enforcement?
He has been briefed by me.
Yes, I am.
Just to make sure, okay.
Ironically enough, I told Joe last week, I had an individual ask me if we could work out parking for their niece who actually works in downtown Ferndale. And I said no. But I think what is unique, obviously, with the type of urban environment you have here, and it's something we've dealt with many, many times, I've dealt with many, many times, is you always have the residents, obviously. Very often, they seem to be forgotten in the parking world and certainly with the way Ferndale's situated as far as the cottage-type homes on smaller lots without even an alley garage. Parking's a very important issue for the residents. And there's two points to this, really. There's the factor or the importance to the residents, and there's the financial impact too. Visitors and employees have, employees in particular have a very good situation where they can pay for discount parking to park on the lots. Obviously, a lot of people choose to park on the side streets, and I think that that's a control issue and a demand management issue that enhances the parking, but also creates a better lifestyle for the residents in the area. So I think it's a very, very easy way to, or very, very simple program to implement. There's a lot of details in the dirt, if you will, but once it's implemented and there's buy-in in the community and everyone agrees, it's a very easy thing to implement. The enforcement officers will be out enforcing the meters too, and they'll also have a route to enforce the zone, if you will, as I call it conceptually, if it's one, two, three blocks from the outline areas of the CBD into the neighborhoods. So I think that there's synergy there that allows us to effectively implement it and enforce it and create a better quality of life. And to a lesser degree, also increase the potential revenue stream, enhance the revenue generators, getting those people back on the lots that are coming down for the businesses, restaurants and the retail.
If I may, also the memo, I agree with everything you said, and it's, you know, very welcome. The memo does reference the central business district, specifically West Nine Mile. And I just want to draw out, as we gain maturity with this plan and enforcement patterns, there is a serious problem on East Nine as well through the neighborhoods. It's almost terrific to find a spot in those neighborhoods on a Friday or Saturday night. So as we gain more knowledge and maturity and the ability to enforce this, I'd just like to emphasize the focus, not necessarily just on West Nine Mile, but looking at those east-side neighborhoods as well, which are dreadfully impacted by, you know, patrons coming into downtown, which is great. We want to encourage that. But it's a function of capacity, but it's also a function many times of enforcement, as you said. So I look forward to being able to work with you to address those issues as well.
I do apologize. That was my oversight, actually, in the regard, they have been briefed on both sides of Nine Mile in downtown.
I'm just clarifying.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agreement addendum between the city of Ferndale and Republic Parking for the inclusion of enforcement and collection services to the existing parking management agreement for an annual management fee of $15,000 per year, per service and... per service and labor and operations? Per service and...
It would be the management fee, per service is acknowledging collections and enforcement because they're two separate.
Gotcha. Okay, so per service and labor and options, cost reimbursement from the Auto Parking Fund and account number 585.000.818.400.
I support.
Moved by Pollock and supported by Piana. Other comments, questions, discussion?
Just a couple of comments. I try to reflect back on the February of 2012, 13?
13.
13.
Not that I remember.
Yeah. We're almost two years in from the launch of our new pay stations, and we have definitely grown and learned and evolved and continually improved how we manage the system. And I like to reflect on where we've come from to where we are now, because I think we've made significant advancements in learning about how to manage this significant upgrade to some assets in our downtown that everybody relies on when they come to visit our downtown and for the residents who are impacted by parking. And I think we have found the right expert partner in helping us navigate the choices facing us as we continue to grow our system. And I think the, it's interesting to me that there's going to be a 30% increase in revenue from the parking fines that will be going back into the system. And I think people need to realize that we're reinvesting that money back into the community. It's not going to fund other programs or services by the city. And I'm a firm believer that parking funds, albeit the nature of getting a ticket is kind of crappy. I get them all the time in Detroit. But it's a necessary type of supplemental funding to help improve the downtown. And as long as this money continues to improve businesses and make them more successful, then I'm very supportive of looking at how do we improve our enforcement and learn from it. Also, we've been in a pilot period for our residential permit program now for like two years. So I would like to... years, so I would like to sort of, are we still in it?
I believe the ordinance expired, right? It sunsetted?
It sunsetted, so somehow, how do we, does this address that?
This is the first step, we need to get our, this enforcement, getting that back in line and making it a priority.
Okay, so people aren't getting parking stickers right now, and no?
They're not, but I don't mean to step into it, but it's really a matter of capacity. You can pass an ordinance, if we can't enforce it, it doesn't do us any good.
Well, that's the lesson we learned, right? The lesson we learned was we don't have enough capacity to enforce the residential, so this is the investment we're making.
This is the step to get us into it.
Yes, okay. Which is going back to my original comment.
And creating a systems plan moving forward, not only in that Troy area that we already were there, but the other areas that we see creeping forward very quickly of needing the same assistance.
Other comments or questions? Marty, could you call her up, please?
Councilmember Harton.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Holter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Regular agenda, item E is a consideration of the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program. And who's going to introduce that item? April?
The city manager's agenda tonight, apparently. A few months ago, actually, Councilmember Pollock had heard about a program, service line warranty programs that regarding the service line that goes from a resident's house to where the connection point is, is not a responsibility of the city, but it's actually the owner's responsibility. And Councilmember Pollock had heard about these warranty programs and asked staff to look into that. So we had been researching some of the possibilities as it relates to having these warranty options available for our residents, and it just so happens that the National League of Cities has been endorsed, or has endorsed the program that we had before you to, by endorsing that, what they were able to do is take an economy of scale and do it through communities to try to bring rates to a cheaper level by having multiple communities engage with them. And we have them here today, I have Mike Chambers here from National League of Cities talk about the Utility Service Partners Program for the Service Line Warranty. What you have in your package is to help you understand, and I know that you'll have a lot of questions, and Mike is prepared to answer as many of them as possible, is exactly what this program covers, what that means for our residents, helping our residents, again, understand that while DPW is responsible for the infrastructure of the streets up to the right of way, that connection point from the house to where it connects to the sewer is actually the owner's responsibility. But you also have in here, not only our agreement with the National League of Cities, but also we had copies of the agreements that the actual residents would get if they choose to do this. This is a voluntary program, and it's also important to note that there were two ways to do this program. One was that we can make a higher rate and take a royalty fee, the city would take a profit, or have a cheaper rate for our residents and the city would not take a profit, and staff is recommending that we do the lowest fee possible for our residents, it's not necessary for us to have that. So you have a lot of information in your packet, and you also have Mike here, who's going to give a small presentation on this program, and then open it up to questions for council to ask, if they would.
Great. Mike, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch, thank you, Mayor and council members. Yeah, as April said, I'd like to just give a quick presentation, I'll be very brief, and then mainly answer a lot of questions for you. Basically, through the National League of Cities, we work with cities and municipalities all across the country to make these warranties available. And like April said, it's a warranty for your residents to cover the portion of their line that they're responsible for. So in the case of the sewer line, typically that runs, you know, from the point of entry of their house all the way up to where it connects to the main. And this will cover everything from just tree roots getting into it, to cleaning it out, that's the majority of the claims that we service, all the way up to if it needs a full replacement of the line and a repair to the street. Now, we do offer this program on a full turnkey basis for the city, so we handle all the marketing, the billing, the customer service, and the claims management, and there's no cost for the city. Now, a couple of benefits, you know, one of the things we hear everywhere I go is basically that the resident has a backup, and one of the first things they'll do is they'll call the city, you guys will send someone out, find out that the problem is not on your side, but it's on the resident's side. Now you have to be the bearer of bad news and tell the resident, hey, you have an issue, you need to get this fixed. So through our program, it gives residents options that they don't have today. Typically, for the sewer line, it costs seven dollars and twenty-five cents per month, and that'll cover, you know, cover anything that they need. When they have a backup, what they'll do is they'll call us, we have a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week service center, and then we'll dispatch a local plumber. And that's another benefit too, is all the work stays here in Ferndale, it'll be a local contractor that comes out there and does the repairs. A couple of the reasons we do that, you know, first off, keeps the dollars in the community, but more importantly, we want to make sure these lines get fixed the way the city wants to be, wants them to be fixed. So we're going to make sure those contractors pull all the permits and they replace everything to current city code. As for the way we market the program, it's all done through direct mail. Basically, twice a year, your residents will get a letter, and that'll say, you know, the City of Ferndale wants to make you aware that this program's available. As April said, it's completely optional, so when the city decides to participate, it's just something that's available for them, it's not something that they have to take. Currently, there's over two hundred and twenty-five cities participating, including ten here in the region, Royal Oak, Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge, St. Clair Shores, a couple other ones that I'm forgetting right now. But, you know, that's kind of, that's kind of the brief overview, and I'd just like to answer some questions for you.
The marketing, is it portrayed as an MLC program with the branding, or is it a co-branded with the city?
It's co-branded with the city and in the Service Line Warranty Program, so it's a co-branded marketing letter.
Historically, you said, or currently, the monthly rate you said was seven dollars and nine cents?
Seven twenty-five for the sewer line, and then five twenty-five for the water line.
Historically, what's been your rate of inflation with that? Like where?
As it went up at all, you know, we've only done one, we've been offering this program for over, I think, twelve years now. We've only done one rate increase, and that was about four years ago. So basically, since we've done that, we haven't had to increase the rate, and that's been kind of steady, kind of steady since then, the seven twenty-five.
I know you mentioned you use local contractors, what's your selection process for which contractors you use?
We have, the best way that we work, and this is up to the city, a lot of times, the city will provide us a list, you know, they don't have to tell us which contractors to use, but they'll tell us a list of, hey, these are contractors that are registered in the city. And then we actually have a team of contractor managers, and, you know, one guy will be specific to the Detroit region, he'll go through and make sure those contractors are completely licensed, insured, you know, check their references and that kind of, that sort of situation.
Since you already covered Royal Oak and Berkeley, it's a safe bet you already have a network of providers.
Yeah, should be, you know, we definitely would like to get a, I don't know if we have a contractor in Ferndale, but we'd like to have a Ferndale contractor.
We have several, yeah. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, I have several. I kind of like to work with scenarios sometimes, so I'm going to throw a couple of them at you. It's a normal day, there hasn't been rain going on, and I find water in my basement. I called the eight-hundred number, filed a claim, what happens next?
You'll basically be done. That's what, we try to keep it very simple for the resident. Once you call us, we'll file, you'll file a claim with us, we will dispatch that job to the contractor here in Ferndale, and then we ask that that contractor contacts you within one hour to set up an appointment to be on your site. Typically, excuse me, what we find is that jobs are completed within a twenty-four to forty-eight hour period. There's no deductible for you, there's no service fees or anything like that, and basically, you know, we handle all the payments, so you don't have to get reimbursed or anything. So once you make that first call, the contractor calls you and sets up the appointment, and then you kind of set up, and then it's between us and the contractor to handle everything else.
Okay. So what if in that scenario, they find that the roots are actually under my foundation in either the weeping pipes that lead to the main drain, or between the basement drain and the foundation?
Okay, is that where your, the sewer line is?
That's where they find the block. The person that was called out, you know, finds that that's where the block is, and he unblocks it, and you pay for that service?
Yeah, exactly, we pay for that. Typically, what we ask the contractor to do is they'll go ahead and camera the line. If it's something, because we try not to dig if we don't have to, nobody wants their yard dug up. So basically, they'll camera the line, if we can clean all the roots up, and that's what they'll do. When they do the cammering of the line, if they notice there's a section that's collapsed, then we'll go ahead and try to fix that section. If they notice the whole line is shot, then that's when they'll contact the contractor manager and say, hey, this is going to keep happening, you know, we need to do a full replacement.
Okay, even if it's inside the foundation?
As long, if where it comes into your house, so if it's that drain that's, you know, coming into the bottom of your basement, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, because it could run fifteen feet underneath my basement floor.
Wherever it enters into your house, that's when, that's when we're going to, when it comes into the basement, that's when we take over.
Okay.
Could I have a follow-up question on that? Because you bring up a very good point. How does the resident know, though, to call you? Is this after their plumber determines that it's been blocked, or do you actually come out, what happens if you come out and it's not blocked, you get service call as part of it?
Yeah, that service, we wouldn't charge, the resident doesn't have to pay anything, that's just something that we take care of as a service.
Wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the water line program, the pipe coming up out of the floor in the basement cracked just before the shut-off valve in the meter, and water is pouring into the basement. Call you, file a claim, same thing?
You guys, is your meters here or inside the basement?
Most of them, yeah, I think most.
We would cover into the meter. So into the, that first pipe that comes into the meter, then we'll cover.
Okay, anything beyond the meter is the homeowner's.
That's correct.
You answered that question. Okay, recently, the city purchased a camera that we use in our sewer system, and I think April and you have had a conversation. The camera's able to maneuver through the sewer lines and capture images of the residence pipe connecting to the city pipe. And we're taking images and we're sending residents letters saying, we've noticed that this is happening, you may want to, you know, investigate further. If they get this letter and they're part of your program, can they call you and file a claim and say, I need to get that removed?
Yes, the only stipulation of that is they have to be part of the program before they get the letter. So if they get, you guys send them the letter and they're not in the program, they can't call us up and say, hey, can we get this?
Sure, sure. Yeah, if I get a, if I get a letter next week, three weeks from now, I can't.
Right, exactly. Saying, hey, the board brought that up, and I went ahead and had a meeting last week with the, our contractor manager, and he said, that's fine, we will cover those claims for you.
Or some month later, boy, I need another letter.
And we did ask DPW to hold off on any more letters, and see if this gets approved, so that we do give people the opportunity to sign up for this.
Because otherwise, you don't, you're not looking for pre-existing conditions, so to speak, obviously, you don't have the person power to do that.
Yeah, there's just too many.
If the house is a hundred years old and they've never replaced it too bad, you would take them for seven?
The one thing we will, because we can't do any inspections, because there's just too many customers. When they sign up, we will ask them, hey, to your knowledge, is your line working currently? So as long, you know, as long as it's working currently, it's not bubbled up into their basement, and then they're covered.
If I may, not to interrupt your line of questioning, but just change gentle to what April asked, why does this come before council? This costs us no money, correct, at the city level, so it's essentially giving permission to market the product, correct? And that's something that requires us to act on?
Well, there's a.
They're asking to utilize the City of Ferndale letterhead.
Oh, okay.
And also, we had the opportunity to actually get a royalty fee, and we're choosing to decline that.
There's two options.
Yeah, I always chose not to do that, that's fine.
But it's also part of the contract, and help me out if I'm incorrect in this, is that with that, with this agreement with them, though, it also says that we won't go with another company and do the same thing, so that we exclusively do this company for a while.
So it's an exclusivity agreement, but there's.
Kind of.
There is a non-exclusive license provision, but it does indicate that the city won't enter into a similar license for a competitor during the term, so.
And we can cancel it anytime.
But there's no stop-loss requirement for the city, so if our fifth three-hundred-year storm comes in next week, there's no threshold there that.
No, but I do want to make a point on that, and I don't, do you want, it looks like you were going to do the same.
I was, it was eventually, and Mike.
I'll let you handle it then.
Yeah, I want to make sure that people are aware that this is not a warranty, or, I'm sorry, an insurance program for your house. So if water does back up for any reason, this program will not cover any cost to personal property. If it either is a flood, or if it's damaged to the pipe, if there's blockage, and I have two feet of water in my basement, and it is a problem, and you fix the pipe, all that is covered is the pipe, the repair, replacement of the pipe. Any cost inside my home is my responsibility. If I've lost the furnace, hot water tank, and that's where personal insurance comes in, homeowner's insurance comes in play.
That's correct, that's basically how this program was developed, was there's just no coverage on that pipe, you have coverage on the inside of your house, the city takes care of the main, and then you just have that pipe that's in limbo that nobody.
Yeah, because, yeah, homeowner's insurance does not cover that pipe, you can't even get a rider.
Can't buy.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to know is, what prevents a resident from signing up for the program today, next year having the work, and then two years after just saying, I'm done? You know, they basically only spent a couple hundred dollars.
Right, and you know, that's correct, and that's something that we see, you know, sees happen, we do see it happen. The one thing I'll tell you is, up here, you guys all have beautiful tree-lined streets, and even with a brand-new pipe, those roots will still, sometimes will find it and disrupt it. So we do have people that'll cancel, but a lot of times, they have such a good experience with it, they end up keeping the program, or maybe they'll sign up for the water line that they didn't have beforehand. But there's no contract or anything for your residents to sign, it's a month-to-month term.
Does the city need to be a member of the National League of Cities? Because I'm questioning if we are.
No, we are not.
We are not, we do not pay, we do not.
No.
You do not need to be for this program.
Yeah. Should we be, though? I know that's a separate conversation.
The question had come up, that's something we can look into, I think we were going to have that discussion this next budget year.
We should.
Because I think that's a package of discussions, it's being that and lifting some of our current restrictions on expenditures to fully take advantage of that membership.
And we can, if you would like, I can facilitate that process sooner than the budget, if you want to have that conversation. I'll look into it.
Other questions?
I'm done with my interrogation.
But I appreciate that, Councilman, you're the one that discovered this program and brought it forward, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and I hope that for a lot of residents, it makes sense for them as well. It's sort of one of those scenarios that you always hope doesn't happen, but kind of keeps you awake at night, especially if you have an older home, like there are many of in Ferndale. So it's a peace of mind that I believe our residents will find value in, and we'll find out, I suppose.
I did want to make a mention too, that I did call all of the communities in Oakland County that have this service currently, and all have been very satisfied and felt that it's been very worthwhile for their residents and have been pleased with it. And we're going to be prepared, I know that one thing they did mention and have to work with staff on, is that even though your phone number is on the letter, City Hall will get inundated, so we'll be sure that our staff is prepared to answer as many questions as possible. And then one more thing, I want to thank Matt Davis from the DPW Department, who helped do a lot of laywork on the research on this, and helped facilitate getting this moving per Mr. Pollock's request.
Well, and I would like to make a suggestion, that if this does pass tonight, I would like to see the city have a page for this program, and I would hope that the letter would include a link to that page, so that people receiving the letter know that we're actually supporting it. Because I'm sure that's going to be a big thing, people going, oh, I don't know, you know, maybe they're scamming.
And that's actually most of the questions that we get, is are we being scammed? Is this for real?
Yeah, and I think that would solve a lot of the phone calls, if they could go directly to our website and see that we're supporting this program.
I'll make sure that council also gets a copy of the letter that's going out, so you're prepared for it as well.
May I ask, as part of your marketing plan, do you include door-to-door solicitation?
No, no door-to-door and no telemarketing, just the mailing and just twice a year too. We don't even want to overdo your resident.
And then, of course, we'll push it through our social media and our website as well, and of course, here, maybe for the next few council meetings, we can make that. As soon as that moves forward and they have the initial letter, we can keep kind of plugging it away for the next couple of months.
We don't actually have a motion on this yet. Greg, Councilman Pollock, maybe you might want to make that.
I sure can.
I make a motion to enter into a contract with Utility Service Partners, DBA Service Line Warranties of America, to endorse the service line warranty program to offer rates that do not include royalty fees to the City of Ferndale.
Moved by Pollock and supported by Martin. Any further discussion, comments, questions?
I do have some comments. When I brought this up to staff back in March, my hope was to find a program that was inexpensive, but had decent coverage. It needed to be a program that has some history of success and provided a service with a guarantee. There are a lot of programs out there that offer, that are offered by for-profit businesses, and the fees could run as high as $20 a month, and the coverage is either limited, or there appears to be some loopholes that benefit the business and not the homeowner. I really do believe that this is the best program out there, the most affordable, with realistic coverage of $4,000 on homeowner property, and another $4,000 with coverage on city-owned property. There's no pre-screening, and no one can be denied for a pre-existing condition, is my understanding. So I really do think that this is a great program, and I'll be one of the first people to sign up.
Can I, can I ask a question about the royalty fees? What would the royalty fee have been?
Fifty cents per-
Would have been-
Fifty cents per month, per line?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Because there will be some staff time, and there will be some expense to the city, but I understand the desire to keep the rate as low as possible for the residents, so. Marty, you want to call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulter?
Yes, the item is adopted, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here and sticking with us all night. The next item is, was removed from the consent agenda, and that is Item J, approval of a contract with Trolson Excavating Company of Troy to replace the water main on East Nine Mile from Paxton to Hilton. Councilwoman Piana, you pulled that, I think, for the purpose of abstaining.
Just abstaining, due to family relations to the contractor.
All right. Someone else then would need to make a motion?
Actually, I have a question. Was the contract reviewed by Dan Chris? Because normally in your packet, there's a letter that states that you reviewed it, and in my packet, I did not see a letter.
I have reviewed it, and I did provide a letter.
It might not have, just not have made it with the packet, okay. I just wanted to confirm that, because normally-
Thank you, Councilman, I did review it, and it is approved as a form.
Okay. Yeah, I couldn't find it in the 121 pages.
There were a few.
I'll move that we approve-
I might read them all.
Yeah?
I'll move that we approve the contract by and between Trolson Excavating Company at 1395 Rochester Road, Troy, to replace water main on East Nine Mile from Paxton to Hilton, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract.
Support.
Martin and Pollock moved and supported. Any other questions or comments? Marty, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Finally, former consent agenda, Item M, is the approval for the city manager's office to produce and distribute a quarterly newsletter to Ferndale residents and businesses for an amount not to exceed $20,000 funded by the general fund. And Councilwoman Piana, you-
Well, I thought that this is important enough to talk about bringing back an important element to the residents, rather than just putting it on a consent agenda tonight. As, I was a part of council my first year when we were going through significant budget challenges, and the city calendar was cut from the budget to the dismay of a lot of residents. And I think over the last year, Michael Larry, our Director of Special Events, or Event Manager, Director of Special Events and Projects, has worked really closely with April and everybody on staff to make sure that we return back to the residents the most important information that they're looking for about their city services. And so I'm really excited that we're launching a quarterly newsletter rather than a calendar. So I was hoping you could talk a little bit more about that.
I can. What we were finding was, first and foremost, I think one of the biggest phone calls that Joe and I get on a daily basis, at least it was the first couple of years we were here, was they missed the calendar. And every, it seems that councils also heard that as well. But what we found out was, it wasn't necessarily the calendar that was missed, it was the information that was provided in the calendar, which was very pertinent. It was snow removal information, sanitation schedules, leaf pickup and things of that nature. So in house, we had the conversation, what would be the best, would should we bring the calendar back? And we started having that deeper conversation, and it was really the information. And by doing the quarterly newsletter, we're changing things so much here, trying to make things better and more streamlined, that the information is more up to date. So if we were doing a calendar, we would have already had the calendar almost probably done and printed by now for next year, and some of the information could change. So by doing it quarterly, we can focus on the services that are happening to them right now. So for instance, the goal that we're going to have is that this calendar, this quarterly newsletter will go out by the middle of October. The focus will be leaf pickup and snow removal. And then in January, there'll be another one, it'll be snow removal in spring. And so it's going to be very timely and very focused on what you need to know at that point. Those are just the key points, we'll always have information on sanitation, how to pay your water bills, but how to get ahold of people at City Hall. So it's just kind of a, a resource tool that's going to be updated every quarter to make sure that we have the latest, up-to-date information, and therefore, if we do make changes, that we can communicate that. So we just think that that's going to be, we're hoping that fulfills that need, and again, it's talking about that, different needs for different people and what they want to see. And they can go easily on our website and get the same information, because it will be posted there, but some people will have it pinned on their bulletin board right next to the refrigerator, and that's important as well. And Michael Larry has taken the lead on working with staff to get that up-to-date information, and we're really looking forward to it, and has also partnered with Allied Printing to do our printing and distribution for this as well.
So you are planning to launch this October?
Yes.
So are, is there, by the end of the month, the first of the month?
Middle of the month is our goal. Middle to, like, the 20th, so the leaves start falling.
So would the time period be then, November, December, January of information?
It's probably October, it's October, November, December, then January, February. The October one this year will come out, just a little bit late, just because we're a little behind schedule, but the pertinent information is there. But we're looking at October, January, April, and August, right?
Wait, it's in July.
July, okay. I couldn't add that fast.
January, April, July, October.
What will it look like? And I, you know, obviously you don't have a design here, but I mean, is it a one-page flyer? Is it a-
Four pages that will fold forward, so that you can put the postage on the back to nail it out. But it'll be four pages in total.
So 11 by 17 folded in half?
Yep, two colors, four, to be due to, two, two colors.
Have we thought about selling ads from local businesses to help cover the production costs?
We'd have to talk to Dan Chris about that, we could as we move forward, because it is kind of a hefty price.
Let's go districts do it, I mean, you know.
Yep, we can look into that. We won't be able to do it by this one.
No, 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 no.
We want to get for sure that we pick up and snow information out there as soon as possible, because both could happen at the same time.
Allied Printing is printing the letter for us? Maybe they could be our first sponsor.
I'm assuming they're compensating Allied, right?
Yes.
Okay. They're not doing it for free?
No.
No, but the first issue, they could.
Well, we can look into that, as we move forward, we can definitely look into that.
I'm supportive of the idea, and I have been supportive of it. The timing, just sitting here tonight, strikes me as weird, because we just hired a communications and community engagement person. And it strikes me that they might have had some input into helping us make it more attractive, and that's why I asked about what it's going to look like, because I hear what you're saying about, it was the information in the calendar, not, that got people to hang on to it, but there's something about a calendar that makes you hang it up, and I, I'm wondering if people will take a four-page thing, read it once, and actually save it. So I don't know, I imagine a communications professional could help us design something, include things on it that are, make people want to save it. Emergency numbers or something, I'm not the expert in this, but there are certain things that I think would make people more likely to actually pin it up than if it looks like a newsletter from the 80s, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, that's what not to do.
Okay. Well, we could easily hold this off and start in January, if that's something, because we did hire this position, and I mean, it's, it's one of those things that we've been talking about forever.
I know, we have, and I've been supportive of it all along, and then all of a sudden it strikes me that, wow, what if our communications person says, "You know..."
Well, I mean, if we could, if we wanted, I mean, if that, because we hear you, we had that same conversation in house, if we could actually send out a letter this time that just talks about leaf pickup and snow or something, we just feel like, especially with the snow emergencies that we had last year-
I guess I'm okay with moving forward the first edition, but I do think, and not to say that Michael isn't, couldn't-
I understand, I-
Fabulously manage this project, but we are going to, we are going to invest in a person that should, would hopefully have some expertise in this, and just be flexible in the way that we go moving forward, just may not be the permanent design.
That's fair, that's fair, yes.
Newsletter designs change all the time.
They do, yeah.
Even online newsletters.
And I don't have a problem with that, but-
No, I hear you.
So the first one might look like The Little Rascals, and then it just gets, you know, a little better from there.
Poor Michael, he's going to so quit by tomorrow morning. I hear what you're saying, you know.
I think he has higher design standards than most of us, I think he's going to represent us all right.
But I, I hear you, what I'm hearing you say, though, is that the quarterly might work this time, but when the person, when we get that person on board, if there's another channel that might work better, we hear you.
Yep, that's what I'm saying.
Yep. The bottom line is, we feel like we just want to get this information out as soon as possible.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, don't make it look governmenty. I mean, I get, I get that water quality report, and that's pretty painful to read, and this can't be painful to read if we're, if we're going to, sorry, Lloyd, if we're going to get people to hang, I don't hang it on the, on the closet door, I'll tell you that. So if we're going to try to get people to hang on to this, it's got to be eye-catching, that's all I'm saying, but.
Okay.
Is there a motion for this item, please?
I make a motion to authorize the city manager's office to produce and distribute a quarterly newsletter to Ferndale residents and businesses for the amount not to exceed $20,000 and funded by the general fund city manager's office.
Support.
All right, moved by Pollock and supported by Piana. Any other comments?
Just that I would like us to pursue maybe some corporate sponsorship, you know, one or two ads just to help pay for it.
I'd like to see the cost on that before we do. Just the, the cost of sponsorships?
Oh, sure, yeah, it won't be this quarter one.
Potential, potential revenue, yeah.
If it's worthwhile.
If it's, yeah.
I agree.
Okay. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulter?
Yes.
Thank you, that item is adopted. That concludes the regular agenda. Next item of business would be called a council. Police Chief Collins, anything for the good of the community this evening, beyond the $10,000 jackpot that you're-
Well, sure you will, though.
Well, you got a newsletter.
Very meaningful, Councilman.
You could sponsor a newsletter.
You might sponsor the newsletter.
Couple of brief things for the attention of the council and for the citizens, for the, the update on the flood damage, we're moving along at a snail's pace, but we do have access to the basement now, so everything has been staged, so we should get our 911, although the public doesn't see any difference, their 911 calls are being handled, but Hazel Park is getting a little tired of our 911 calls, so we should be up and running within this week, we hope, certainly by early next week. That being said, we do want a shout-out to Hazel Park, because they have really been carrying our mail for the last year with our prisoners and with our 911 for the last month and a half, so we really appreciate-
Well, I know you guys do that for each other, but is there anything else we should do to-
Yeah, we did do that, I mean, after the prisoners, we put on a spread for them and thanked them formally, we intend to do something similar for them on this, too, but we really have kind of worn out our welcome a little bit over there.
We can do a nice resolution of thanking you to them at the next house.
Certainly, that'd be appropriate as well, yeah.
The other thing is, is that this weekend, before you go to the baseball game, or watch the baseball game, this is the take-back day for prescription drugs at the police department, so between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., you can drop off your unwanted, unused, or whatever you, while you have extra prescription drugs, you can drop those off at the police station. We are partnering with the Southeast Coalition on this, they, so if you stop by, they will also be giving you drug safes for your home, free of charge, so that's an added thing that we're doing this year, so thanks to Carly Podzakowski for her assistance there. And lastly, we had, and I'm sure you saw in the newspaper, there was a story that was about the large things from autos that we have been experiencing. It's not only us, it has been the communities that surround us, Hazel Park, South Royal Oak, Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale, of course, Oak Park. This has settled down considerably from what, when it was in its, was really going rampant. Most of these thefts were crimes of opportunity, we certainly aren't blaming our citizens for participating, but there are some things that they can do to help themselves, and that is to, and the weather's getting a little colder, so we're not leaving our windows down on our cars, we're locking our cars. Please keep things of value out of sight for folks, that's really, particularly in the overnight hours, and if you're parking on the street, although we have had experience with them going into people's driveways as well. Most of these are, have been cars that were parked on the street that were left unlocked, very petty thefts in most cases, but we have had some electronics stolen and some purses stolen that were left on car seats. So if we partner with our citizens and let them know that this has been a problem, but we have made several arrests, as has Royal Oak, and it has abated to a, to one or two every couple of days, as opposed to having three or four in the evening. So I don't know if it's because they've moved on, or we, the ones that we've stopped were the ones that were involved primarily, but it has slowed down some, but it's always a good measure for people to remind everybody to be careful with their goods.
And you still want them to call 911 if they see any suspicious activity?
If you see somebody at 3:00 in the morning, this is generally when these type of crimes happen, or in the, in the dark hours, and you'll, and one of the tells is somebody walking down the middle of the street at the, we, hours of the morning, call us. So even if they're legitimate, I think people appreciate the fact that we're keeping an eye on the neighborhoods, so we're more than happy to respond to those type of calls, and we encourage it, actually. The more, the more people that we stop in the middle of the night with a legitimate reason, with the call-for-service notes, it's not like we're going out targeting folks, but this is legitimate, you see somebody walking down the, the middle of the street in the middle of the night, a lot of times are up to no good. Not always, but a lot of times.
Thanks, Chief. Eric, Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening?
Yes, sir, your honor, I'd like to start with, I thought Little Rascals was appropriate for Michael, from Councilman Pollock. Moving right along, I'd like to thank Joe Gaucho and Stephen Smith, because, and the council for approving that, they have done a world of leaps and bounds for us in technology and keeping us on. We ran across some bumpy roads, but they worked through it, and we're moving fast and staying connected now, which is a very important thing for us, so. Stephen and Republic Parking have done really well by us, so I applaud you for that. We had a fire in Madison Heights this weekend, it was a commercial fire, and it was pretty substantial. Commanding the fire was, I believe, Lieutenant Lard of Madison Heights Fire. Both Royal Oak, Birmingham, Hazel Park, Ferndale, and Troy ended up with their air supply in there. And it just goes to show you how important the cooperativeness of mutual aid and auto aid is in these times, that the commander did a very good job, everybody was protected, he had reserve crews on standby, so when they finally did make entry into the building, they tried to cool it down as much as possible, making it a safer environment, if you can call that, when you're going into a fire to put it out. But it was an old commercial garage, changed over to high-tech, so there's a lot of plastics in that, and it was a fast-moving fire. You never did see flame, but a lot of smoke, and that makes it even scarier for those guys going in, but excellent job to the crew in Madison Heights and all the responding departments. I tend to go to anyone that I can go to when our people are involved, and to see if there's anything they need, uh, assistance with when we're there. And last, um, the burn permit program is working very well. I just had a young couple come in, everybody was out on run, so I had to handle, uh, taking of their check today. And so just a reminder to residents, you cannot burn, it is illegal unless you have a permit to do so, and we've inspected your yard, and you have everything located in a safe proximity. Twenty-five dollars one-time fee. We'll inspect it as long as you live there or own it for the period of however long you're there. However, if it changes hands, the new person has to reapply and pay their fee and get re-inspected for what's going on. But the program is working very well. We've had complaints dropped, and everybody seems to be moving right along with no, uh, neighborhood battles. Thank you.
Great, thanks, chief. Jenny, anything from the HR perspective this evening?
Good evening, I just wanted to report quickly. Last week, I had the opportunity to travel down to Tennessee to the headquarters of Care Here, who is our vendor, um, who will be working with our healthcare clinic. And I got to, um, um, really learn a lot more about the wealth of opportunities we have within this clinic to improve not just our health within our employees, but really dive into the more of the wellness, more of the sustainable things that have a bigger impact on our, um, healthcare costs. And in addition to that, I got to see their clinic, which was, um, very exciting and very impressive, and also got to work with their staff, who I was extremely impressed with their knowledge, their resources, and their support that they give to their other, um, clients and communities. So I really look forward to, um, progressing in this process and opening our clinic. So, thank you.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, Drew, is there a projected open date?
Yep, right now, we've been pushed back unfortunately due to the flooding. Um, our anticipated soft opening is January twelfth, and we're probably going to be planning on a grand opening this, about the third week in January.
Thanks. Joe, anything from the recreation department this evening?
Good evening. Just real quick, um, coming up on October eleventh is our annual Hilton Fall Festival, once again presented by Garden Fresh Gourmet. Um, the event will be held at Martin Road Park in our Activity Center from eleven to four. Um, activities include hay rides, pony rides, carnival games, we'll have a face painter, a couple bounce houses, um, sure to be a good time. Um, more information is on our website, ferndalmi.gov. Um, if anyone is interested in helping out, um, we are still looking for volunteers, and that information is on our website as well. Um, or you can contact our office at two four eight five four four six seven six seven. Your phones are back up and working.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Uh, Michael, anything else from the special events area?
On the same day as, uh, the Hilton Fall Festival, we will also be having the Angel Kisses event, the Dress Like the Devil Run For the Angels. And so if anybody is interested in, in participating in that event, they are to go on angelkisses.org. Uh, another exciting news I want to tell you, if anybody is, uh, familiar with, uh, Tim Gunn from Project Runway, just want to let you know that-
Get it done.
Yes, what's that?
Make it work.
Make it work, yes.
Make it work, that's right.
Uh, just want to let you know that, uh, just a few weeks ago, that, uh, Mr. Gunn was here in Ferndale, uh, representing Project Runway. And, uh, everybody needs to watch Project Runway on October ninth for a little surprise that no one knows about, yet only I do. So, but it's exciting news that's going to feature and talk about the city of Ferndale.
Wow.
So I just want to let everybody know that, and that, uh, it will be on Lifetime on cable.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Good to know. Joe, anything else from the innovation officer perspective this evening?
Uh, yeah, I just heard prior to city council that, uh, Transforming Local Government Innovation Magazine wants to do a piece on our wireless access control system that we did for the parks. They're very interested in the innovative alternative solution, and we're going to be contributing to that, an article to that in October. They also want to hear more about our cloud network management reconstruction that we did using Cisco Meragi devices. Um, that should come out in November. I'll make sure to send out copies to that.
Will you be on the cover?
Yeah, we're getting there.
No, Tim Gunn got it again.
That's why you got that nice haircut. Uh, Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening?
Just one thing, Mr. Martin. Something I've never done in my career before. I really would like to, uh, encourage the residents to consider the service line warranty program. Um, I can tell you that in the last two years, the department has literally responded to hundreds of calls for sewer backups, and the vast majority are, are dealing with aged infrastructure on private property, you know, the service lines. So, uh, particularly for your sewer lines, you know, I would, I would really encourage residents to consider it, and, uh, because it might save them thousands of dollars down the road.
Thank you, Lloyd. Uh, Marty, anything from the clerk's office?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to announce that Monday, October sixth, is the close of registration for the November fourth election. So if you are not registered, vote, please come to City Hall or go to the local secretary of state to get registered. And we need election inspectors. If anyone is, um, computer savvy and has a day to spend with us on Tuesday, November fifth, fourth, please go to our city website on the elections page and go to election workers or call the clerk's office, and we'd love to talk to you. Thank you.
Great. April, anything else from the city manager?
Just one thing, I wanted to let everybody know that, um, when they turned in their insurance claims to Mirma, we told them it would be about thirty days. Unfortunately, because of the magnitude of, um, of, of insurance claims we've been getting, they're behind, so, um, you're probably not going to get an answer letter for the next, probably the next couple of weeks is when they're anticipating sending those out. So it's a little bit late, I know people are starting to call asking where their letter is, so.
I'm, I'm curious, um, if I may, Mayor. Um, I had water damage, I know, uh, Councilwoman Piana had water damage. I didn't file a claim, because I'm not expecting the city to cover me back. But should I, for the sake of the FEMA, file one?
No, that has nothing to do with FEMA.
Okay, so, so those reports, we are not u- using to-
We just use them as a, as a way to-
A gauge?
-try to do a windshield assessment, but if FEMA were to come in, they would actually go door-to-door. So, but you filing an insurance claim had no bearing on it.
Okay, so me filing a claim with the city, uh, okay, then I'm not going to bother.
Is that it, April?
Yes.
All right, Dan, anything from the department? All right. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Martin, anything?
Uh, just, we've had an art fair and a DIY fair since we've last met. I just want to congratulate the organizers of those events. I thought that was fantastic. It was so nice to have the DIY, since we, at one point, thought that may not occur. And just a great Ferndale weekend, so congratulations to everyone.
Great. Councilman Lennon?
I did, but I gave it to Derek, uh, before the meeting, it's about to sign at Nine and Farrow, and I think he's going to get with you, Lloyd, and follow up on it. Go by the Nine and Farrow, you'll see the sign. There's one at Nine Abana and there's one at Nine Wanda, too. But the one at Nine and Farrow needs attention. I saw that, I was going to thank you, I saw that. Good job.
All right. Uh, Councilman Pollocka?
Um, I have three things. One is a personal political item. Uh, on October third, um, Councilman Martin, uh, myself and several prominent, um, I believe, Councilwoman Martin is, um, several prominent, uh, political figures are going to be supporting a fundraiser for Mark Totten-
Yeah.
-who is running for Attorney General. He's running against Bill Shutey. And I am encouraging people to, uh, vote for Mr. Totten, uh, who is, uh, someone who really stands up for the people and not necessarily the businesses of Michigan. Uh, the second item, uh, oh, I'm sorry, so that fundraiser is October third at seven thirty PM at Soho. Um, if you can afford a few dollars, uh, a lot of money, his campaign could really use it. Right now, he's kind of neck and neck in the, uh, in the, uh, the polls that are going on. Uh, the next item, I want to, um, encourage people to keep your street grates clean. Um, hate to admit it, but fall's coming, and with fall, we get leaves, and leaves build up on the grates, and they cause problems. So if you could just make sure that if you have a grate in your house, uh, in front of your house or your neighbor's house, keep it clean. The last item is, uh, kind of right off of Lloyd, is I would encourage people to really look at the service line warranty program that we approved, uh, tonight. I think it's a, a great opportunity to, um, save money if you have a problem with your, your sewer line. It's a great investment.
Very good. Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, I have one announcement, and that is, um, the Dales Neighborhood Group is, uh, hosting its Halloween in the Dales on Halloween. Last year, we had a tent in front of the, um, Digital Learning Center, and we handed out donuts and cider and candy to the, uh, neighborhood kids. Um, and we weathered the torrential rain last year, and we're hoping that it doesn't rain and, uh, become freezing cold this year. But we will be, uh, um, having some activities for the kids at the, um, at our little station in front of the, uh, school, and it's from five thirty to eight thirty on Halloween night.
Mike and I have to wear costumes?
Yeah, can we put on the donuts and cider?
We're going to pin the grin on the pumpkin, maybe you can be the pumpkin.
I'm not showing up there, we've got to stay clear.
Is that it?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, a couple items from me. We did the mayor's business council last week, and it was a very nice one. We did it over at nine six five Wanda, which we've talked a lot about. And, uh, the folks at Brass Aluminum Forging, who are really the ones behind renovating that property, uh, brought in a couple of huge pieces of equipment. And I don't pretend to know exactly how it works, but I, I do know this. They got a contract with Harley-Davidson, and they're going to make parts for Harley-Davidson, and actually, not just create jobs in Ferndale, but bring jobs back from China. So there's some exciting things going on in terms of economic development here, including luring jobs back from China right here to, to Ferndale. So congratulations to the folks at nine six five Wanda for repurposing that building and, uh, and helping grow our economy. Um, one other thing that I learned there, and I'm actually going to go next week, um, Progressive Metal, which is over at thirteen hundred Channing, uh, they've been a Ferndale, uh, business for a long time and very successful, and they do a great job. And Eric Borman over there and his crew just won the Masters of Quality Award, which is a really big deal, and they're having a, a shindig next week that I, I said I would be at. And so just, just know that we are, you know, we go around the room and we talk to these, these large commercial and industrial, uh, business owners, and they're doing very well, and they're growing in Ferndale, and they're hiring people, and I'm really proud of the job our economic development team has done in encouraging their growth. So good news on the, the business front in Ferndale. And finally, I would just say, I was at a fundraiser over the weekend, uh, the three incumbents on the school board, Jennifer Latash, Karen Toomey, and Nan Care Mueller are running as a, as a group, as the three incumbents. And I, I just want to say that, uh, I'm so impressed with how the school board has changed the way they deal with other organizations like the city, like the library, like other public entities, and I-
Neighborhoods.
And the neighborhoods, and I really appreciate the effort that they've made, uh, to create a strategic plan that is thoughtful, but also to create the partnerships with other organizations. And I'm supporting those three incumbents, and, but whoever you support, remember, we do have an important school board election in November, uh, so remember to read up on it. And with that, meeting is adjourned.
Phew, that was a long one.
It was.